Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Dearborn Heights Regular Meeting at 6:37 PM. Madam Clerk, may you please take your roll call.
Hassan Aman.
President.
Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
President.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much. And today, we're going to have Alicia, who's here in the audience, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alicia. You may be seated. She was a little bit thrown off guard there. Next up, we have the Agenda Approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Agenda for the Regular Meeting of July 8, 2025, as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have Approval of the Minutes, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of June 24, 2025.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Minutes from the Regular Meeting of June 24, 2025, as outlined in 4-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Let's keep our ayes on, guys, please. Eyes open, eyes see us. Next up, we have the Minutes of the Special Meeting of July 1, 2025.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Minutes for the Special Meeting of July 1, 2025, as outlined in 4-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, it's Public Hearings and Public Comments. You have two minutes. And I believe some of you asked for an additional minute, and he's coming right up. They're racing themselves to the podium.
[laughing].
You got an additional minute here.
Good evening, Zohair.
One second, sir. We just did the Agenda Approval. Okay, we'll do it at the next meeting. This is the very... Hey, we're on public comments right now. Okay, all right.
The first thing, I'm going politely to ask one of you who voted yes for the fire station to be approved at the location which the administration chose, one of you to change their vote because that location is not the proper one. And I hope one of you has the courage to change their vote before the meeting because that's your right to do so. Second, do not give your authority and your oversight to this administration because this administration has proven over and over and over disregard to the Charter, disregard to every law and every etiquette in this city. They approved so many things illegally. They hired some people illegally, and they asking you to give them a blanket basically check to pay all the money for all the contracts without coming back to you. That is your authority. Do not give it up. And I ask you strongly not to give it up. $1,600,000. We overpaid the county, and nobody followed on on it. And I thank the Treasurer for asking for it. I hope you give her the power, since the administration didn't care, to follow up on that $1.6 million, which is our money. Give her the authority to go and ask for it. We are entitled to it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Abdulhak. I do want to interrupt you quickly. We were at an event the other day, and Councilman Ahmad actually brought it up to the County Executive himself.
Yes.
And he said that, you know, they were working on bringing it forward. I think about two weeks ago, he brought it up at an event.
Okay.
I just wanted to recognize that. I didn't, but Councilman Ahmad also brought it up.
Thank you, Councilman Ahmad, for at least following up on it.
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
One last thing. The mayor bought a house in Dearborn. He paid $600,000. It's listed as his primary house, and he listed his house in Dearborn Heights for sale. Now, the legal issue, is he sleeping in Dearborn or he sleeping in Dearborn Heights? Is he legal resident in Dearborn Heights? If he moved off Dearborn Heights, he should not be mayor. He should be removed. And I do ask Rajer to have, you know, the, at least the initiative to check on it, to see if this mayor is legal to be our mayor, or he's living someplace else outside of the city. The last thing, my friend Rajer, I ask you on April 22 last year, if you have sent some, this year, if you have sent something to the Attorney General regarding the review of the Charter. And you said on the 22nd, yes, you did send something to the Attorney General. The document from the Attorney General shows that you sent the document next day. You did not send them on the day you said you sent them. I hope this doesn't happen because you are an attorney. I had lots of respect for you.
Your time is up, sir.
I hate to think that you did not tell me the right information.
Thank you.
To be polite. Thank you.
Thank you so much. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name. The city you reside in, the street that you live on. I know you asked for an additional minute. I will go ahead and honor that for you.
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I have a few concerns. And one of my biggest concerns is, is Van Houten Park Behind is supposed to be closed or not? Isn't there a safety issue going on there? Anybody got an answer?
There's hundreds of safety issues.
Okay. Isn't it supposed to be closed?
That's the administration's decision.
You guys got kids out there playing with wires exposed, cracked concrete or whatever the plastic stuff they put up there, all uneven. And we got hundreds of kids out there playing every day. Does anybody care? Mayor? Oh, that's right. He's not here. Another concern I have is Amazon bill that we have on our agenda. $14,788 in one month to Amazon, yet there's no itemized deduction on what department, what this money was being spent on. And I think that is something that you guys should not approve on this agenda. It's a lot of money for a month to spend on Amazon. Another thing I want to touch base on again is the businesses on Ford Road, the blight. Been walking a lot of Ford Road lately. Bottles, cans, weeds. These businesses are there. Obviously, they're still in business. They're making money. I think we need some enforcement. Businesses need to, you know, this is part of our business area to bring people here. And it looks bad. Concrete's busted up. You know, things aren't clean. It just looks bad. And I got ahold of Mo this weekend. I was walking 4th of July. And we have another Airbnb next to the Jagged Fork on Ford Road, which had over probably 30 cars parked on the lawn. He got a hold of the police. But again, we had another, more problems at another Airbnb. And I went on the Planning Commission's website today, and there's nothing for an Agenda, which the meeting is supposed to be Friday. And so, Thursday, yeah, right, Thursday, I'm sorry. So canceled. So here we are again with the whole Airbnb issue being pushed back another month. By the time you guys get ahold of it now, it's probably going to be September. So, you know, here we go again, residents, more problems. And I just want to touch base on too about the trees. Sycamore trees are dropping everything on the ground again. We have residents, you know, people suffer. Dogs. People are breathing this stuff in, and we can't even get them trimmed. So I just, somebody needs to step up. We just need to start taking care of things in the city. It's looking bad again. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are you speaking as a resident or a...
Comptroller. Intern comptroller, deputy comptroller, multiple jobs. So I am going to ask that Item 11A is removed off the Agenda as there is false information on there. I know there is a Item 11A, the CSO based in recapture. As Mr. Abdulhak said before, there is a claim that the administration did not contact the Wayne County and hasn't been in contact with them. However, there is email communication on April 24 confirming why the money can't be repaid. And based on the bond language, you cannot repay them, we cannot get the repayment back until after the bond is completed. And then on May 6, 2025, the email was forwarded to the Treasurer, Council Chair, and Council Proctem stating what the, what the county has stated regarding that. So the administration did contact the county regarding it. And there isn't any, the statement that the administration has not resolved this matter is false. They have resolved the matter. The issue is based on the legal language in the bond. We cannot receive that money until December 2027. And also, I do want to make the point about the Treasurer being the point of contact. I think that's kind of overstepping the boundary because the comptroller has always been in contact with Wayne County, and we have been in consistent communication with Wayne County regarding any matter that, regarding payments or balances that we have with them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I do, I also want to make a point about the Amazon bill. The reason why there isn't an itemized deduction is because those are 100 invoices, and if I give all those invoices, like a 300-page backup. If you look at each line item, they're like 20 bucks, and majority of them are actually library items for their programs and their events that they hold.
Deputy Comptroller, I've asked my staff, I asked before, that I need itemized items for the Amazon bill.
Yeah, I mean, I could.
This time, I know I saw it a lot, but still, it's out of transparency for everybody and the residents.
Going forward, I can do the itemized. It's just going to be a very large one, 300 pages.
That's fine. I mean, it's all electronic anyway, so.
Okay. No problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Maddie, since I have you up there quickly for an item on here.
Yeah.
Didn't we approve Item 14 at the last meeting? We passed it because we did a budget amendment for it?
So you guys technically approved it, but there wasn't a motion to approve him afterwards. So during the claim session, last meeting, you guys removed them off the Agenda, off the claims for that person as well as the other individual, and then asked for me to come back with a budget amendment. But once I created the budget amendment and that was passed, you guys did not reopen the claims to approve him. That's why he's back on there. All you have to do is approve him this time, and he'll get paid tomorrow.
Okay. As long as we're not approving twice.
Well...
That month.
You guys removed, at last, the claims of the last meeting, you guys removed them off claims. Because you removed them off claims, in order to have him repaid, you would have to reopen that motion.
Put it back.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that Georgia contacted me. Her and I both understood it that way. So I appreciate you guys for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Speaking as the Treasurer, this is on Agenda Item 11A, which is a resolution. So real quick, I'm going to give this here. There's some additional information. That includes the financials from Wayne County directly. And thank you, Councilman, for follow-up on that. If you look at this, I have emails, lots of emails, which started, by the way, when Hassan Jamal was our Budget and Compliance Director, and we were working together to pursue getting this money, the discovery of the over-captured CSO of $1.6 million. I will tell you, we started that in 2021. I have lots of emails from 2021, looks like about 12 pages worth right here. 2022, there's another three pages. 2024, I've got eight pages of emails. They're all there for you. I'm going to stand in, you know, the most recent email that was mentioned just now for 2025. We fully know what the bond language says. We know that the obligations have to be paid. They are being paid. They have been. They're there. We've got the record. You see the financials directly from Wayne County. I didn't make those up. Those are theirs. Okay? What I'm asking for is the oversight by the Treasurer, who is the receivable end of this city, accounts receivable. This is money owed to the city of Dearborn Heights and the taxpayers that they paid, that they overpaid CSO with Wayne County. Okay? We are now in 2025. We started this process in 2021. And yes, that can, you know, we're nearing the end, but quite frankly, if you look at all those emails, those are all emails between myself, Mr. Jamal, and Wayne County. Every one of them. The only email I have in particular from the mayor is where it says, and I will tell you the date, oops, sorry about that, that was August 23, 2022, at 7:04 PM. Please hold off on calling or pursuing anymore. We can discuss this eternally. I'm sorry. This is 2025. All I'm asking is, we need some direction to get this thing done. Okay? That's all I'm asking for in the resolution.
I agree with you on this one. This, this, I wholeheartedly agree. Again, hang on, hang on, hang on, guys. Guys, I'm not doing a back-and-forth here.
No, I don't think we should either. I'm sorry.
We can have this discussion where I can have you both talk during, during that Agenda item. But to have a back-and-forth here, I'm getting too many calls from residents about these back-and-forths, and we have to just slow them down, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you outside here, just? Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have two minutes.
Miriam Eastman, Kinlock, Dearborn Heights. This has been going on for about four years. I was approached that the trees on the side, on Lawrence's side, I live on Kinlock and Lawrence, but on the side of Lawrence, there are four or five trees that are falling. Today I had a branch, and there's been no rain today and no wind. So the tree limb, a big limb, that covered the driveway and that fell. They did come and take care of it. But I was told, I was approached, that the disease of the trees are going to cause a problem. And do not fix the sidewalks until they take care of the trees because it's going to cause another breakage and another problem. Okay. So just before that, I was going to fix the sidewalks, and I was told that there is a committee, or whatever you call it, that you pay half, the city pays half. They have a sidewalk taken care of. I don't know what you call it. And then I find out I've been calling every couple months. No one comes out. No one answers. No one has addressed this with me. Then I'm told, well, that's going to be eliminated in another year or so about the sidewalks. So now I'm in limbo. So that says, homeowner, forget about it. You're going to pay it when we tell you that you have to pay it, and you have to fix the sidewalks, and it's your responsibility. Wrong. This isn't right. This isn't an American thing to do. If you have been told, and you believe in the system, you would have done it two, three years ago when it was less expensive. Now it's going to cost me twice as much to get the sidewalks fixed. And then, if the trees come down, it's going to even be worse. So then I was told, they're going to come and take down one tree, but they don't know when they'll do the stump. This is ludicrous. I ask you, please. I mean, where are we living in? What are we living in?
Thank you, ma'am. Do me a favor real quick, please. Can you fill out one of those forms directly in front of you? And then, Mr. Dancy, can we also get with the resident? She lives on the corner of Kinlock and Amboy.
Lawrence.
You know, I'm sorry, Kinlock and Lawrence. There is about four or five large massive trees there. And then I'd also like to see if Rick Watlin is on here. I still believe, don't we have the sidewalk program?
I believe so.
Well, they said they're going to end within two years.
Well, then let's get on it before those two years.
I agree. And I'm willing to do my part. But then somebody said, well, they may not even be in charge of it after a year or so.
Well, let's hear from Rick if he's on here. If you don't mind unmuting Rick, please.
Oh, it does say Rick.
There he is. How you doing, Rick?
Good. We do not have the sidewalk program at this time.
How do we get a...
We have never hit the sidewalk program that the city pays half and the homeowner pays half.
No, we just, we just got a really good deal on it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but they, they know me at the Public Works. She says, I know you call up all the time. My thing is, when I wanted to do it, they were doing it. So now what's happened? Now they're just schluffing me off until they say it's over. We're not doing it anymore. That's, that's sneaky. That's not a way in America to handle things. If I've been on for two years, two years, I've been told, and waiting for them to, I'll pay half, they pay half. So they're not addressing it.
Okay. Let me hear from, from Rick. He's on Zoom. Go ahead, Rick.
We are going to be going with another sidewalk program, but we've, we've never paid half.
Yeah, but you guys got a very good deal. Yeah.
Correct. But what I'm saying, whatever we pay, the, the...
That's not true.
Citizen pays.
Okay. Ma'am, just fill out one of those forms over there, if you don't mind. And then... Unless, unless if she's talking about a program with the CDVG, I'm not sure if they had something. Rick, did they have something with the CDVG, with the sidewalk, that if somebody with limited income?
Not that I know of.
Then why would the city treat people when they came to inspect the trees on their own? I had nothing to do with it. Told me, lady, don't repair your sidewalks until we take the trees down. That's the truth.
Well, the good news is, our director is here, and he's going to have a conversation with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Right, ma'am, just step up, or sir, step up. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
My name's Joe Spada. For, I live in Dearborn Heights.
What street?
Hendrickson.
Thank you.
On Centralia. We have a problem with people coming off of Beach Daily and just flying down Hendrickson with no, I mean, there should be like a four-way stop there, or at least a sign on Beach Daily that says, no right-hand turn from 4:00 to 7:00. They always try to bypass the...
Yeah.
The light on Ford Road there. And I'm here with a few of my neighbors here. They got the same complaint. That's about it.
Is our chief police on, by chance?
Yeah, I did contact the mayor's office and, and went to the police station, and it was like a vicious circle.
Sir, fill up one of those forms and have the clerk's office email it to me, and I'll get it addressed with the chief directly.
Or maybe one of those, well, signs that have a speed limit on there.
The Joe Speed-Up Sign. I agree. I think those are very effective.
All right, one of these?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
With your email on it and phone number, please.
Thank you. Yeah. I'll get ahold, I'll get ahold of the chief for you folks. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
My name is Melinda Eastman. I'm from Dearborn Heights. I live on Kinlock. I think there's a lot of issues with our city, but I feel like the most pertinent thing we need to take care of is the looks of the city, the beautification. It is shameful. I'm embarrassed for Dearborn Heights. I'm from New Jersey. I've lived here for 10 years. And I think the main issues on Ford Road is one of the main areas, I think, in Dearborn Heights. It's a concrete jungle. There is tar everywhere. There's, and you can say, well, there's nowhere for the grass to grow, but those weeds are growing pretty high. I feel like the ordinance, no one's taking care of that. If, I love, I love the grace myself that there, you know, being a little lenient, people will get to it. But it's been 10 years that I've been noticing. And there's weeds all over. There's tar all over. I think we should give people a year or two years to get rid of the tar, concrete, and have them put grass there or something to make it look more beautiful. The streetlights are from 1960, I remember, about. I feel like even Garden City looks more beautiful than Dearborn Heights. I mean, we just need some new streetlights or some kind of modification to them, some pretty impatience hanging down from them. That would look nice. And the other thing is, we've had robo-cans for 20, 30 years where I'm from. So they're not even new, but 10 years ago, we never had trash like we do near the Kinlock area. And I do, I understand there's a field there, so there might be a little wind tunnel. But where is, where is all the garbage coming from? Down the other streets. And I feel like those trash, the collectors are old, the trucks. They go on top of the truck. I've never seen that before. And I see things coming off them. So it's not dirty people. Nobody's taking their stuff and throwing it out the window, or at the mosque or anywhere. I think something needs to be done about that as well. I think that's it. Oh, I have one more thing about the Crestwood Football Field, the beautiful football field that we just got. But I don't know if that's for here. But the fence, there's weeds all along it. It didn't happen when the...
You can speak with the trustee over there, the vice president.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. And I also, over the last few years, I've asked Moby Dune to do a couple things for me. And immediately, they were done within a month, a few weeks or a month time. I thank you very much.
How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Wait, sure. Last week, I emailed my state bread and the Chief of Staff of the Detroit Area Integrated Health Network because I was trying to get some resources, and I was being ignored. So that's why I emailed my state bread and my Chief of Staff for the District. Why? And because you're supposed to educate your legislators, so I, and my right had every right. Second to that, David Kinesik, Wayne County Commissioner, who is a member of Governor Whitman's administration, and his other job title as the CEO of the department, he has oversight over Detroit Wayne Integrated Healthcare. So all the group within the city, David Kinesik has oversight authority. So I think that when people are reaching out for rights, and the elected official can be the elected official and can be a Dearborn Heights elected official when there's issues, if you have oversight, something should be done, especially if you know that person as a state senator, and you're advocating and teach people how to talk with their state senator, Senator David Kinesik. So I think that it's shameless that I have to come here and point that out. Anybody can look at oversight. Example, people have oversight over the parking license commission. People have oversight over the police department. So if an elected official, David Kinesik, can be hired by the governor's administration and have oversight over a majority of Detroit Wayne, I think there's an issue. And I think that we're attacking everybody in DC, but we're not looking at the issues right here in our community. So I just want to come. So I'm really happy I'll be staying in the city still. So I came. I was a little bit nervous, as you know, if I had to move out or not. So I'll be back at the meetings. And second, bike riding on the sidewalks, it can really be hectic on a bike with the trees.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. So now that we started a new fiscal year, I'm going to be keeping track of some of these finance things and bringing some things to your guys' attention. On this week's claims, Item Number Two for Artistic Landscaping, I noted that there were 37 additional properties on that invoice above the original contract. And my understanding from last year was that additional properties were either properties that weren't initially on the bid list or that we had acquired. I thought that was rather high. So I looked into last year's bills, and we jumped from nine additional properties at the end of the last cutting season last November to 35 and now 37 properties. That's an extreme jump. I don't believe we purchased any properties. So I'm just curious why the first question is why we were so off on our original bid list on that one. And this is the DPW contract, not the ordinance one. But additionally, and more importantly, the motion to pass that contract limited the contract to $60,000 a year. Last year, the 24 total was $65,194.94. The two invoices we've already gotten for this year are combined $23,500. And with the number of cuts still to be billed that we haven't seen, we're on track to hit at least $71,000. So $10,000 plus over the amount approved in the contract in the motion by you all. So as far as tracking the contracts, what is allowed to be spent in those versus what is actually being spent, if we're on track, this whole contract goes through 2028 and has a max cap of $300,000. There's no way we're going to have grass-cutting services in 2028 if we continue on this pace. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, I just want to just answer to Mrs. Lapointe. I actually reached out to Artistic Landscaping, and I said, what's going on here? Because I saw the same thing. The city has actually, if you saw on social media, the city had just evicted a bunch of properties. And on those properties, those are, some of those are, many of those were squatters of city-owned properties. And what started to happen here was Artistic had to go out and actually cut those. Now, I don't know if they're on this bill or not, but you're going to see the properties that the city owns has a contract with, with Artistic, and they went out and cut it out. Another thing was, I had the president of Military Hills subdivision reach out to me and said... and said, and there's actually pictures showing that this area used to always be cut and clean. And in the last three years, it looked horrendous. And every day, we would go back and forth and I would hear it's Wayne Colony's, I would hear it's Dearborn Heights, I would hear it's Wayne Colony's, then it's Dearborn Heights. Well, guess what? We got to the bottom of it and it was Dearborn Heights. And what was happening was, they were cutting and they were leaving the strip on, of weeds and it was growing and became bigger. And you can only imagine over the years of two, three years, it grew so much more. And so I said, hey, man, like if you're cutting this grass, we'd wet this. And they went out and they cut it because they were already cutting it. But as far as some of the holes that they've increased time.
I will say that the ones, the eviction ones, I don't believe that most of those would have been in there. I believe those were the nine additional properties. However, I will double check that during the meeting on my other spreadsheet that I have. But I understand what you're saying, that if there were, but I don't believe there would have nearly been that, like an additional 25 properties.
No, I don't, I don't say 25, but there's, there's about, I think, like six or seven evictions. And I think there was another one yesterday and then we have a couple more.
At this point, though, if we're adding $45 per cut for all these properties, it might be in our interest to relook at this contract to make sure that we don't exceed the amount that we've already approved, right?
Yep.
Because we're going to run through it way faster. So it needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Ms. Lapointe.
I spoke with the owner also and he's billing for some work they did last year that he didn't get paid for.
Yep.
It's in there. Plus, he's doing court order, uh, cut, grass cutting. Yeah, yeah, that they, we don't, wasn't on the original bid. So that's, but his, his fact that he didn't get paid from work he did last year was due to a mishap by the mayor's office where there was a temporary person in. He submitted all the photos of the properties that he cut and she misplaced them. And so he had to go through and retake all the photos again.
I'm going to tell you, I had a great conversation with Artistic Landscaping. I was amazed how professional they are. Like I was amazed how professional. If we have to relook at that contract, we have to look at the recontract, but the city has an obligation to upkeeping its city because all I'm hearing is blight, 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 blight. So if we have to subcontract something for blight, guess what? So be it. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. And are you speaking as a resident?
Tom Winslow, Tulane Street, North Michigan. I'm speaking first as a resident.
Okay, you got two minutes.
At the last regular meeting that councilman Winslow missed, vote was taken and passed to okay the building of a fire station on the golf course. And the big complaint was that this is what the professionals recommended. Well, I know a professional that recommends they build multimillion dollar homes on the golf course, too. Just because a professional is recommended doesn't mean it's right. The fact, it doesn't matter what we're building there, it's the fact that we are building there now. And that goes against anything that was agreed upon when we originally voted six to one about the contract on the golf course. So now I'm going to speak as a city councilman. Recently, I've been working with the ordinance director, Lafie, for a location of a community garden. And we came up with a really good site on Van Born Road. And it's between Madison and Academy. It's got plenty of room for cars to park on it. I wanted to put this on today's agenda so we can get going on it, preparing it for some fall crops and prepare everything for next year because we've been, or I've been talking about it and we've all been talking about it for at least a year now. And we needed the okay on this to go ahead and start the process of preparing this property. And I'd like to, as a councilman, I'd like to add this on the agenda tonight to vote on it. It's just, it's vacant property owned by the city. And we've been talking about this community garden for quite a while. It's, it fits in with the Van Born Corridor project, which I'm a committee member and because we haven't done anything hardly at all on the Van Born Corridor. This would be a start of doing something for the Van Born Corridor. So I'd like to add that to the agenda if possible tonight.
How about I, how about I say we take it to a study session and we get the gist of things because like with, with us saying that, okay, we can approve it by a garden, who's going to operate? Is Tom Winslow going to operate it or is the city going to operate it? Have they subcontracted out or is it going to be a business owner? Like, is it going to be made for profit for, you know, the commission? Is it going to be a profit for the city? Is it going to be a profit for, somebody's going to lease it from us?
Well, no one wants, the people that want to be involved, they don't want to do anything until they get the approval.
Well, anybody can, I don't think anybody can do anything unless, because if it's going to be open for bid, I mean, if it's going to be open for like profit, then it has to go for bid. And you have to get the bus.
It wouldn't be for profit at all. No, it wouldn't be for profit. It'd be completely non, 100% nonprofit. We, there's a couple of fruit markets in the area that'd be interested in helping set it up and
I know, but like who, who's, who's to say who can take from this garden or not then at that point?
Well, we, we need to get started on it. And just, just like the, the short-term rental, which I pushed for four months ago to make a stop, nothing's happened yet, you know, just like the charter resolution, I tried, they said, let's get this on for this year's vote. That didn't happen. And this is just going to be another thing. Let's, let's go to a study session. We need to just start it, say, okay, we're going to approve it and you come up and present it to us. Because these people that want to put their, donate their time and effort, they're not going to start designing something and say, well, it didn't get approved, why I wasted my time? You know, I mean, it's, it's just something that we, you know, as residents, as part of the Van Born Corridor, this was part of the mass, Van Born Corridor master plan to have community gardens. And we haven't done anything on Van Born Corridor at all. We haven't had a meeting in over six months.
Over a year.
Well, we did have a little get-together, but, and speaking of evictions, I'm tired of these evictions. Every council member up there has been called about a household full contents put out on the front yard. And we have no rules against it. And what we do now is we have the homeowner, the bank, or another entity that I'm going to speak of in a second, throw all this trash, all their belongings, if it's onto the lawn, and in the hopes that Priority will have time in the next day or two to come pick it up. But what happens on that first night that all that stuff, belongings are put out in that trash? Everybody goes through it. They even go through it while it's being emptied onto the, onto the front yard. We need to have an ordinance, I'm working with the court right now to cover, that you put one bag on the grass, that's a $15,000 fine to the homeowner, to the landlord. And in a couple cases, you got, everybody here is going to be amazed that there was instances where a whole household contents were put out on the lawn and sat there for a week and it was done by the city of Dearborn Heights. Taxpayer money paid for some people to come empty a whole house of contents out of the front yard and sit there for a week, paid for by taxpayers. We need to have an ordinance that says, you do not put one kitty's toy or a used diaper or anything unless you have a dumpster in place in front of that house before you start any evictions at all.
Councilman, I think that's would be added to the house taxes. Whatever we do, it's added to the house taxes.
Yeah, but you want to live across the street from that? I had a guy, he had his whole family for the Fourth of July, people have never been to his house and right across the streets, all this trash has been sitting there. And I don't blame Priority because they're busy. This is the busiest time of the season for a Priority. And they, they, first of all, they have the bid on it. They will go out there, they look at all the trash, they say, okay, you know, X amount to do it. And we get to it. You just don't, I mean, what we do is, if there's an eviction, we'll, we'll supply the dumpster then and put it on their property taxes. You cannot throw that crap out in front of the house and expect, you know, okay, the landlords do it, bank does it, this is recently, too, and the city of Dearborn Heights does it. That's bull, a bullcrap, excuse me. And we can't be tolerated here in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I don't think any of these residents that have seen it, you've all seen it on social media. And it just doesn't sit there for one day, sits there for many days or weeks. And then when, you know what? When they come to pick it up, every bag's ripped open. And they have to pick everything up, break it, and wide open to rodents and it never gets cleaned up 100%. These people, taxpayers live next door to this, across the street from this stuff. It can't, it's not, it can't be tolerated. What's your question? Well, I don't know. There's, in, in the cases, what I understand, the city of Dearborn Heights owned property, the people were evicted a long time ago and because of legal acts or something like that or whatever, or delays.
Those were squatters.
They were just, they were living in the house until they were legally evicted.
Yeah. So I, I want you to know, under the Federal Housing Administration, that there's a process of eviction that you have to follow, whether you're the state, the federal government, the city, the county, whomever you are, no entity is allowed to come in and just say, so that means if somebody breaks into your home, Michigan law says, let's just say, Tom tells me, well, you can sit in my backyard for 30 days. On the 31st day, if Tom tries to kick me out, he's not allowed. That's actually, that's, that's an actual state law, even though Tom owns that house, but because I've been there for 31 days, Tom has to go through the process of the court to toss me out. Now, the state law also states, and I, you know, I'm not an attorney, maybe Roger can speak on it, but the things that you throw out for them, I have possession of being able to pick through my stuff outside of the lawn, I believe for about 24 hours, if I'm not mistaken. So for example, the one that happened on Detroit Street, the guy lost, the guy was a Dearborn Heights resident, I knew Larry well, I've had many conversations with him, even before he was evicted. And he, you know, he was trying to save his home, the bank had already purchased it, the sheriffs came in, threw out his stuff. He asked Priority when they came to pick it up, please, these are 30 years of my life, of my belongings. And then now we're stuck with it between a rock and a hard place. This is a guy that's lived in our city for 30 years that just lost, he's got an autistic child and he's got his wife sitting there with them and they're literally living in the streets now. They make $1,200 in, in social security. He told me, I have nowhere to go. He couldn't afford his payments anymore and all of his 30 years are just sitting in front of the front lawn. He asked Priority to please, don't, don't throw away all my stuff, can you give me a little bit of time? And I believe Priority honored that for him. Honestly, I know this is a tough decision. I know that no resident wants to look there in front of their home, but a lot of the residents that actually called me in that neighborhood were like, you know, we, we feel bad for this gentleman. He actually slept that night at a neighbor's home. But as far as the city properties go, there's no reason why the city is evicting squatters and saying, well, we're just going to throw all the trash out on the front lawn and then we're going to wait for Priority to come. What the city should have did, and I agree with Councilman Winslow on this, was brought over a dumpster and emptied everything inside that home and then took that dumpster out of there.
We have to have dumps, we have to have the ordinance for that. I'm working on that right now. And the gentleman on Detroit Street, Priority, it wasn't until four days after Priority came out there that he asked them not to go through the stuff. And it had already been just tore apart. There was, I mean, I feel sorry for the guy, but when, when Priority came out there, actually it might have been more than four days after it was sitting out there, the stuff was spewed all over the whole property. It was, it was terrible, you know? But anyway, that's, that's all I've got to say right now.
Thank you, Tom.
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
Council chair.
So I want to speak as a resident first and then as a councilman. San Sab John Daley, Dearborn Heights. At the last meeting, I actually voted to place the fire station.
There's nothing from the audience, please.
I voted to approve the fire station. That was the deciding vote. And when I made that decision, the condition was that I would be involved in the process from A to Z, whether it's meetings, consultations, design, everything from A to Z. The city, the administration and the engineer walked out of this room with ears closed, like nothing happened. Sent an email to him the day they had the meeting, going over what's going on. We're not invited. I get an email back from the city attorney saying, I will not be a part, a party to these meetings and I will not be involved until the contract's put in front of us. Tonight, I'm asking the city council, and I sent this into an email to Roger and he's been waiting on it, and I'm going to, I'm going to uphold my word, what I say. And what I'm saying tonight is, I'd like to suspend the rules, add the motion back to rescind the motion. I want to rescind my vote. And we can go back until this administration realizes the authority and the conditions that the council has are valid and they're recorded. You don't dictate, the mayor, corporation council, nor our engineer, or anybody dictates what conditions we put on votes. And since that, we're going to wait, I'm going to rescind my vote and we'll vote on it down the road. And the fire department knows that if I can build a montage mall in the city, I would. But we're not going to give them a box the way that this administration and the engineer wants. We want oversight, we don't want the same exact failed projects going on with the city with this administration. So I ask the council tonight to put the fire, fire station motion back on because I want to rescind.
Rescind.
Rescind my vote. And we'll go there and we'll, and we'll wait until to see what happens in the near future, maybe when there's a new administration in office.
Council chair.
I'm going to go to Roger and then I'm going to go to
Not council chair. I was supposed to speak as a resident, I'm going to speak as a councilman.
Okay, go ahead.
Two things. Number one is for Mr. Cooper. I, I have a question about an agenda item, but I wanted to, I want, I wanted to put it in comments. Are anything for BSNA cloud going, coming out of general fund for any department? Are taken away from any hirings of any department? Okay. Once we get to that item, we're going to put that on the record, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Roger, go ahead.
Yes, council chair. In terms of the, we did identify five properties with squatters. One, we're in a lawsuit with. The other four, we took legal action. The court officers not only brought dumpsters to clear out the properties, but also put padlocks so people couldn't get back in and do any vandalism to the properties and the items. The court officer actually stood outside and supervised a lot of the removals. I think it was done diligently and they've had a process that they've been doing for years. In any case, as to Councilman Saab's statement, I think the charter provides for the mayor to provide a count, a contract first and bring it to council. The reason being that if Councilman Saab and I wrote him, I specifically said, do not get involved in the negotiations. And the reason is, there's a conflict of interest. If he gets involved in the negotiations and A to Z as he claims, then he has to stop and vote on it later on. How can you turn around and say, okay, I'm looking at this objectively, but you were part of the negotiations and the settlement? There's a conflict of interest. Your role is the charter is, in the pursuit of the charter, is to read it and vote on it. If you start getting involved in the negotiations and it's challenged later on, they'd say that vote was, was biased and that you had influence on how the council would vote to approve something you negotiated. That's why I said it's not your role to get in that, that part of the negotiations or the preparation of the contract. I would trust the people who you've appointed, the directors who are able to negotiate and handle, they're professionals, to do their job. You may not agree with it. So when it comes to you as a contract and you say, no, I don't like this, I don't like this, that's your time to say, okay, stop this, don't vote on it. But when you start interjecting yourself into it, saying, I know every aspect of this, I've been involved in an aspect of it, then you turn around and have to vote on it, that's a conflict of interest. That's what I said. You do what you want to do, you put it up again, but you're subjecting us to liability.
There's nothing from the
That's up to you. That's, that's up to you. That's what I'm saying.
Council chair.
I'm sorry, councilman, please.
Roger, you all done here?
I am, sir.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go to councilman, then I'm going to go back to you.
Thank you, council chair. I wanted to ask the madam clerk, is it, would be like rescinding his vote only or are we going to be all voting on it? Because to be honest, I think I, I want to echo Councilman Saab, too. I, I felt comfortable when he's going to be overseeing all the meetings, but since he was denied the fact to be in the meetings, I think I'm going to probably
What you would have to do is suspend the rules.
Add the motion back on there.
You would have to rescind the motion, which I looked it up, 25, 326. And so that would nullify that.
You have to
Well, if it passes, if it's rescinded, then it's gone. You can't change your vote from a previous meeting.
Okay.
But you can rescind the motion.
Okay.
And then if you choose to-
We add it back on if we want to.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ahmad, you all set?
Yeah, almost.
So, just, just for clarification, so, I mean, this corporation, Roger always spins stuff around. I never said once that I want to negotiate on behalf of anything, it's called oversight. And it's because we kind of figure and see what kind of contractors we're getting in the city, who knows who and who knows what, and who's benefiting this and who's benefiting that. So for us to stand up and, and protect taxpayer money and, uh, protect our first responders because the conditions they're currently living in, to spin it and say, I don't want to be in a negotiation because it's gonna, I'm, 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 I said I want to sit in these meetings, and I said I want to talk in these meetings. But the fact that we got this email, and we got this much, uh, the word I'm looking for is, 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 we got this much pushback that, no, stay in your role, well, I'm gonna stay in my role, and we're gonna remove it, and that's one less thing the administration has to worry about until the next, hopefully the next administration comes in.
All right, guys, that, let's, I'm, I'm done with the back and forth, this is public comments, anyone else in the audience? Seeing now, we're gonna go to Zoom, can we have Hiba A. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Hi, my name is Hiba Fajie, I lived on Hardy Avenue in Dearborn Heights. I've had a issue that I've been trying to tackle for a month since April. I have been reaching out to the Public Works Department, have personally come down to Dearborn Heights City Hall to try and resolve the issue. I've received a bill for the water and sewer that is over three thousand dollars. I've attempted to contact the director of the department, and I have gotten in touch with him once only after contacting Councilman Mo Beidun, um, about the issue, and he had to put me in direct contact with him personally. But that was the only time he has ever answered me, and since then, I've still been trying to figure out what the issue is, why my bill is so high. I, me and my landlord have personally brought people out to inspect the property in case there's any issues with the pipes or leaks, and they're on and on. I've attempted to change the meter as the city is suggesting, and they've canceled it and will not tell me why. I've attempted to do a meter test with the city and even said to, yes, to pay the two hundred dollar fine. And just to find out on the date of the appointment, that it was canceled by the director of the Public Works Department, John. Um, and when I asked him about it, he also could not give me an answer why. He said he would never cancel the meter test, and to this day, the, at any time I speak to anyone in the city, um, hall office, no one can give me an answer. I should not be paying a bill that I don't have a reason to pay. My bill has never been over one fifty to one seventy a month, or every two months, I'm sorry. And now it's over three thousand dollars, me and my landlord have both tried to speak to someone at City Hall and in Public Works, and I am not getting an answer.
Thank you, Hiba, and I know our director is here, I know Mahdi Beidun is here. Um, I don't know if there's a way we can get her information, Madam Clerk. Um, Hiba.
I think she can, uh, she can text you, right?
Hang on, Hiba, you have my cellphone number, right?
Yes, I do.
Text me real quick, I'm gonna get it over to Mahdi Beidun, and I'm gonna get it over to John, and I'm gonna put us all in a conversation, and hopefully, I mean, look, I gotta tell you, and I'm not saying, taking sides here, John does a very good job at answering his phone, he, I think he's just been overly worked right now, it's, it's, it's the season, and I'm not making an excuse, but I'm gonna get us all back on the conversation, there may be a little bit of his department, maybe a little bit of the comptroller's department, and, and regardless, I'm gonna put us all together, and we'll have those conversations, and we'll move from there, can you just text me real quick?
Yes, I will.
Mahdi, can you also shoot me a text, because I don't think I have your number saved? Thank you, and I'll get us all in a conversation, I'm sorry that it led to this.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Next up, we have iPhone, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Hassan Jamal.
How you doing, sir?
I'm doing fine, I am, I am, my name was brought up regarding Resolution nine A. Yes, I do confirm that I was the one when I was the director for the budget compliance and grant. The one point six million dollars resulted from landmine auditing the county, a particular, uh, CSO, uh, bond, and that was discovered, we started back in twenty-one. It should be by then, there's a process. Talking to, uh, executive, talking outside, the, there is a process. The process goes by the starting day, if there is a legal issue, the legal department will talk, they will have a result, they will have a report, the report should be brought back to the city council, and based on that, you move there. There are a process, process, not, you know, certain council, certain mayor, certain executive talk to each other on an, on, on an event, that does not, you are not lobbying. Those are specific legal documentation over the page of one point six million dollars. Please, go ahead, approve Madam Treasurer to go through the legal or whatever it is to get the result. If we have to wait, you can wait, but there is no, it's only pieces here, pieces there, but no official. I was, I was involved in it, I'm proud of it, I discovered that one point six million dollars, and I like the city, you know, this is, this is my community when I live outside. But I like you to take care of it, make sure to secure those mine for the residents of the Dearborn Heights, which I have a lot of friends, and-
Thank you. Thank you, sir, your, your time is up, thank you so much. Uh, how you doing, Margaret? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Margaret King Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I just have a question, um, it just like, with what Mr. Saab was bringing to the attention of wanting to be informed with the golf course, shouldn't all city council members have the right to be informed with that? It would make us residents, maybe if we try to call and can't get through, we could get, Mr. Saab could be informed to help us know what's going on and to keep that transparency and communication going through the city, because that is very, very important. That's all I have to say, thank you guys so much, have a good night.
Thank you so much. All right, now the public comments are over, anyone else? Thank you. Now we have fund transfers and current claims. Councilman Saab.
I moved to Dearborn Heights City Council, approve current claims and ACH wire transfer six dash one through dash, six dash sixteen and six, and six dash eighteen through six dash forty, as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Const, uh, sorry, Councilman Ahmad.
Any discussions on that?
Council Chair.
Thanks for the conversation. Uh, Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Council Chair, I just want to discuss about the Amazon list, I don't know if you guys are okay with it?
I'm not.
Send us the backup, or we can just take it off.
I, I'd like to be take it off and send the, send the backup. I mean, look, this isn't something we've asked one time, it's not something we've asked two times. Some, I don't care if it's ten dollars, twenty dollars, at the end of the day, it's electronic. Take a screenshot, flip it on, every time somebody does something, take a screenshot and just email it, it's legit. You being lazy, and I don't mean, I don't mean, uh, the, our comptroller, I mean, anyone that's not, anybody that's using or purchasing this, that's not sending it over, it's you just being lazy, legit being lazy.
Uh, Council Chair, since, since we're talking about backup, what about artistic, uh, I know we asked about the pictures before, I don't know if, uh, Director Dancy, do you still, do you have the pictures electronically for all the properties being cut?
I think they, uh, provided physically.
Physically?
They did, and you hear Tom saying that he gave it to them and somebody misplaced them.
Council Chair, it is part of their contract that it could just be included, because Councilman Hassan Ahmed asked them to be included, so it was included in the contract.
I know, it's twenty twenty-five, I mean, if they can just do it electronically, I mean, I mean, since you, Council Chair, and Councilman Winston, talk to them, if you can just, I don't know, tell them, please send it electronically so we can see it. Because we can't every time go to John's office and look at him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Saab.
Um, can I add an item?
No, this is, this is claims, we'll do that at the end.
No, it's a-
It's a, okay, I have a quick one. I spoke with the resident, uh, number fifty-two, urban tree trimming, sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, it's for Detroit Street, nothing was, there was no backup on it other than the bill. This is the second time we've played the sixteen hundred dollars, I think it's a duplicate. Uh, so I'm gonna ask Madam Clerk and, and Dancy to please look into this before we pay them, because we already paid sixteen hundred dollars for urban tree cutters at, on Detroit Street, uh, for the same exact amount, and now we're paying it again. So it's the same exact backup, with just a different date, and I, I don't have any, I don't have any information on it. Check it, same exact address, same exact bill, twice. Uh, so I'm gonna, I asked that fifty-two is being removed on there.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I just looked at the last minute, the last minutes that you just approved through claims, and actually, there were two for the same amount for urban tree trimming. I don't know what they were for, but one was for sixteen hundred, and one was for forty-six hundred.
Yeah.
So there's actually two that are the same exact amount.
All right, can we just remove thirty-four and thirty-five?
I'm sorry, you said there was-
Thirty-four, yeah.
Last meeting?
Yeah, I'm looking at the list from June twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry, thirty-four as well.
It's a long one.
I'm looking at thirty-four and thirty-five. Thirty-four and thirty-five are the same exact amount that they were.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, can we eliminate those two?
Yes.
Typically, they're the same in the event they take down the same diameter tree contract, right? Thirty-inch diameter tree, about this much to remove.
But we also had that bill on six twenty-four. Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Saab, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I'd like to remove thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay.
And, uh-
And thirty-eight.
Anyone else?
And you're good with artistic?
Councilman Ahmad, would you like to second that?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
You're good with artistic?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I still think, I mean, and I, and I, and one of the reasons why is, Councilman, uh, once we nailed it, we owed artistic for almost a year and a half, we did not pay these people. And, the, all this was submitted to the administration, why isn't the administration sending it to us? I don't know, do we penalize the contractor that's doing his job? And it just said that this is where it's become.
But at the end of the day, Council Chair, it's, uh, like I said, twenty twenty-five, we need electronic pictures, not physical.
Well, even if you give electronic pictures, they're not gonna send them to us.
No, no, I mean, John can send them to us, because he, it's being sent to John.
And he knows what you guys want. It's not like I have time to look through, I don't know how many properties, it's not like I look through physical pictures, they hand you a silver box bag, you trust the contractor, you're doing it right, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have oversight in the city.
I mean, if, Director, if he uses a camera, he can with every picture, put the date and put the address for, on the picture. I mean, I used to do it, I, for ten years, I did bank-owned properties, and my owners used to do it, like, fifteen years ago. So this, this, I mean, he does so many properties, he need to do it. I mean, he's not making pennies here, he's making good money, so, thank you.
Anything else? All right, with the elimination of thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-eight? All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed?
There is no fifty-two.
I'm sorry, I was looking at a different one, it was fifty-two the last time.
All right.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thanks, Barb. Next up is consideration of bids, Sessor Comer, bid award, commercial appraisal services.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for commercial appraisal services to Fromm and Widmer, Widmer Inc., for a total cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, and return the bid, bonds and unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, two hundred eight one seven zero zero zero, of which the current budget is twenty-five thousand, as outlined in seven dash A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by, um, Councilman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Um, I'm looking at this bid, I'm sorry, uh, Assessor Kim, um, I'm tired of you calling earlier today, uh, but I'm looking at those bids, and, um, one of them is like fifty-five hundred, the minimum bid, just for the, for the, for the appraisal itself. And if you, I'm just trying to add up the difference between fifty-five hundred and fourteen thousand, that would, with, with the hourly fee for preparation, if, if it goes to trial, that's about thirty-eight hours, do you think, I mean, you can come up here. The lady in yellow. See, you, you think it's gonna take thirty-eight hours for the appraisal to prepare for trial?
I don't think, no. I don't think it will, but he just gives a cap out, so that way, if-
No, no, I understand, even I emailed, um, Mr. Widmer, and he was nice enough to email me back, very professional.
He's great, yeah, he's very communicative, that's why I've enjoyed working with him previously.
But just the way I look at it right now, it's like, there's about fifteen hundred difference just for the appraisal itself.
And so, this is another big box, I don't know if you guys have heard, I mean, this has been happening for decades now in Michigan, and it's happening all over, these massive corporations hire shark lawyers, and they just appeal everything. Um, and so they're going after target, and so I've been in communication with a couple other cities, and they're doing this everywhere, and it's kind of one of those things where you either roll over, and you say, sure, your target is now worth thirty dollars a square foot, because that's what they offered us, um, which they're saying the target building on Ford Road is worth one point seven million dollars, so, um-
And how much are we assessing it for?
I don't have that on me, but it's more than that, I promise. Um, I think we're at like fifty dollars a square foot, as opposed to thirty.
I mean, we got people on Ducks Theater, their homes are worth more than their property.
I know, I know. And so I was looking at some of the reports that they, some of the appraisals that they are referencing, and they're looking at buildings in like Chesterfield Township, and using those as reference, and just, they're federal companies that don't really know our area at all. But the reason I, I prefer working with Widmer is because I know he's gone to trial on these things before, he has a track record with them, and we are already working with him in our, uh, assessing for tribunal. And so, there, he's already familiar with our attorneys and vice versa, so I was just hoping to continue that relationship, um-
I mean, I totally understand, but the, uh, we're here just to save, I mean, we're, financially, we're not in good standing, so whatever we can save for the residents, that's what we're here for. I mean, the way I look at it, I would probably go with the lowest bid, and put a cap at ten thousand in case they need to go to trial, um-
I, my, I haven't done research on if she's, if the other company has won in court on these big box things, and so, I, I, I know John's work, that, that's really where I'm coming from, I, I can't reference, but-
Councilman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much to our assessor, I know you and I had this conversation, kind of said like, hey, like, sit with our chief of staff.
We did get the price down lower than, than before.
Trying to find where the budget is coming in from.
Yep.
The reality is, I know you know somebody, and you're probably comfortable with working because you've worked with them in the past, it's also a lot more expensive than what we can actually afford. And, and the reality is, as a fiduciary to the city, we can't just say, well, we're gonna use somebody because we know this person, the reality is, we have to use somebody in-
Who's gonna win, that's my big thing.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think-
Will they be able to produce the quality of work that will benefit us and actually succeeding in trial over this? Because we're going against Hahneman, and they have a track record of winning and cities losing.
If, if I may, real quick.
Yeah, of course.
The reality is, I don't think, I mean, I don't really know any of them. But what I do know is, what we can afford and what we can't afford. And, and, and the truth is, I don't think anybody's gonna lose on thirty dollars, because that's not realistic. I don't think, I don't think any court, I don't think any trial is gonna stand before us and come back and say, we agree that one of the bid, and if you don't know this, target on Ford Road and John Daly is one of the, statistically is proven as one of the busiest targets in the country. And it's, and it's actually, um, uh, uh, one of the most updated and up-cup targets in the country. But to say it's thirty dollars a square foot, I think, I can argue and say, no, this is not thirty dollars a square foot.
Yeah, they-
But I'm not gonna go there, and I think anybody that's put on an RFQ that says, hey, I can take this on, I don't think, I don't think it's in our permission to say, we're gonna doubt these people that they can win. I think it's our job to say, okay, if you can do it, and you've done this type of work, we don't even know if, if she's won or not, because you told me you didn't research her, or, or the other person.
So, one thing to account for is that Fromm and Widner has a cap on there, so if this big box store target, and their lawyers decide to drag this out, um, then the city could potentially, uh, spend more with, uh, the third one, which bid lower starting amount, but bills expenses without a cap. So Fromm and Widner, it's only, uh, not to exceed fourteen thousand, meaning that, no matter, if it takes a year for this to settle, you can only pay fourteen thousand. If it takes a year to settle with the other person, she's gonna be billing two twenty-five per hour.
With a cap, with a cap of ten thousand dollars.
What'd you say? You can't.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm, I'm suggesting, I wanna put a cap at ten thousand.
You can.
And to be asked with, what, I can't?
You can, because they bid, that's their bid, you can only accept the bid as they present it.
I can put it, we send it back to them, if they don't like it, we can, we can bring it back in.
So, what you can do is-
I mean, if they don't accept it, no, if they don't accept it the way we want it.
You can negotiate with them. So if you want to, um-
Mahdi, I just, I don't see it, if it goes to trial, I don't see thirty-eight hours just to go to trial, if it goes to trial, I don't see a work of thirty-eight hours at two twenty-five, or two two seventy-five, I think he's charging. Um, I mean, I don't see thirty-eight hours worth of work just to go to trial for an appraisal, you know what I mean? It's not, we're not going to the Supreme Court here, it's a tribunal.
I understand, I'm not a, I'm not a-
You know what I mean, I mean, how mu, how mu, I'm looking at the taxes, how much do they-
You also have to remember that this is ongoing taxes, so depending on the person you choose and the appraisal that you have, the court can decide a certain value which can dictate a recurring tax amount. And if you have a proven track record with somebody who's done the work before, then that means the taxation on that property will stay at a better level than possibly what we would get in another person. I thought, the, the thing with an RFP is that it's not always the lowest bidder, you account for qualification, you count for the qualifications of the bidder.
I know, but Kemp said she didn't even check if, uh, they qualify or not.
It's not that I didn't check if they qualify, I just found someone else's quality to, I'm not here to disparage other people's work. So that's what I'm not gonna stand up here and do, I just know what work I've seen that I believe can do what we need. So that's what I'm not going to stand up here and do. I just know what work I've seen that I believe can do what we need them to do. That's all.
I'm just going to be honest with you, the, the, the thing with this is that because there's no cap, this big box store in the store has unlimited funds to hire lawyers. And they can drag it out, you know how lawyers act. If they're paid per hour, they're going to keep dragging this out as long as possible. They're going to try making it so that, oh, appeal this, appeal that. Even if the court decides something, let me appeal it, then you're going to have to go and hire this person again and say, hey, they appealed it, let's, uh, we have to pay you again. Um, Fromm and Widner, like she said, has a track record with the city and has done work with the city and, uh, has done quality work with the city. The thing with, uh, these big box stores is the city relies on these type of taxations to provide funds for general fund. If you, um, if you put that in jeopardy because you are selecting a low bidder for fifteen hundred dollars less, that taxation can be, um, three thousand less per year.
Why are we assuming that the lowest bidder is automatically going to lose? Like you're painting this thing like the lowest bidder is going to lose? And we just sat here and said, one, there's two things that we just...
It's not the lowest bidder, she doesn't have a cap on her expenses.
We can put the cap, if that bidder does not like it, you can bring it back to us.
So here's the thing, you can also then put the cap to the other person as well and say, hey, would you be willing to...
Or you, or you could do is you could take the first bidder and say,
Yeah, you can negotiate. You can, you can negotiate with the bidders under RFP. Now, if you feel, if you want to say, hey, please go back to these bidders and negotiate for a, a cap, a certain cap that the city can pay, then you can go ahead and do that. But I do want to give you a heads up that it's crunch time in the sense that they have, and they are preparing to go to court for the appraisal value.
Anyways, we have, we have a motion on the table. What do you want to do here, councilman?
I mean, I want to suggest go with the lowest bidder, put a cap of ten thousand. If, uh, if that bidder does not like it, they can bring it back to us. That's me. I just, I don't see thirty-eight hours going, to go to trial to have that, needs thirty-eight hours.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know.
Anyone else from the council?
Councilor Chair.
Miss Ma'am, Councilwoman?
Yeah, it might be about four thousand more, but that's the most it can be. If we go with one that's, doesn't have a cap, they can get to be outrageous. It's a game they're playing, and I don't think they're going to want to change the RFP, and if we're under crunch time, we're, we're here, we can lose a lot of money in tax base.
Even a thousand dollars per year can be twelve thousand dollars on twelve.
What is court? What is, when they're going to court?
September. Our, our, our valuation reports are due by September, and they were just appealing twenty-four and they tacked on twenty-five now. So we also have to, that's part of it, is that's for two appraisals. One based on the value of December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three and one based on the value as of December thir, first of twenty-twenty-four. So they're doing two commercial appraisals in one.
Did, did, did our, did our bid request for limits at all? When you sent out this RFQ?
So...
I don't know, I don't think...
Go ahead.
So, there, when you do an RFP or an RFQ, you can't put a limit, you allow the bidders to determine their terms. Uh, you say, what is your price for this and what is your price for this?
I'm familiar with an RFQ, man.
Yeah. Uh, so with this RFQ, you say, uh, what is your pricing for initial? And what is your pricing for additional fees as trial and, uh, court?
I don't know, I just feel like four thousand dollars is the max.
I, I trust the assessor's judgment and judgment.
Trust came too, but we're here just to save the residents' money.
Keep in, keep in mind, the ver, the amount of money you're spending extra in maybe four thousand or fifteen hundred will be possibly made back.
Where are we getting this money from also?
It's already, uh, budgeted out of that budget line item that they stated.
Councilor Chair.
Okay, go ahead, councilman.
Um, no, like I wanted to say again, four thousand dollars is not a lot of money considering the fact of how much we can lose in a tax base if they go to court and the person we pick is not... I mean, we want somebody that's going to be solid in their bid, you know, in what they say the property is worth. We can't afford to lose it. It's a big box. We don't have a lot of big boxes in our city and it's potentially a lot of tax money we could lose.
Finish, please.
Go ahead.
No, I just want you to finish. Done? Okay. I just want you to, I just want to go back to my, my last statement.
Sure, go ahead.
We're continuing to paint, and because they're the lowest bidder, they're going to lose. We got to stop doing that. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the, having done some tax appeals, and this is a big issue, there's a Michigan Supreme Court decision regarding the stores counting, not the, not counting the inventory in the store. Um, but, uh, and former councilwoman, uh, Jemana Judah is very experienced. Uh, very experienced in front of the, um, Michigan Tax Tribunal. You, you know her?
Yes.
She's good?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Former councilwoman. She was on the city council.
Yeah?
Yes.
Uh-huh. She used to work at Michigan.
Council Chair? Yes, sir.
Uh, we had an issue with, uh, Home Depot a few years ago. Who, who handled that?
Fromm and Widmer, same guy.
That turned, that turned out favorable with the city difference. Okay, thank you.
Um, and just in case anyone was wondering, uh, the summer tax for twenty-twenty-four for Target was a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, and the winter tax was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. They are a substantial taxpayer, so I'm trying to preserve our tax base the best I know how. So, doing my best to keep our money here.
All right, we'll do one last one. Go ahead.
One question.
Um, yes.
If they do get it at, you said thirty dollars a square foot as opposed to fifty, what would be the difference they'd be paying in taxes? How much do we personally have to possibly lose?
So right now, we have the value of the property for last, for this year, the assessed value, which is half, at two million, seven hundred and seventy-five, or two million, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Or, yeah, fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, sorry, lots of numbers. Um, so they're paying taxes based on two point six two seven million. Um, they're saying that it is worth a lot less than that. And so they're, they were putting it at the to, like the value at like one point seven million. So that's substantially less than we have it at.
I mean, in dollars, you're saying eleven thousand something and fifty-seven thousand something. I'm, I'm going more towards the tax base.
Taxes would be under the...
Um, you know...
That wouldn't be exact.
So we're actually even fighting about the size of the building in court, so that's part of it. So we don't agree on, on property sizes, and so they want to go with their number, but they're, I don't know what they're measuring. They're saying the building is not the same size we have it at, um...
Don't forget, it actually goes even further behind.
Oh, the property does, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's pond, retention pond, all that back there.
Because, yes, the retention pond, because they have it gated, if you go to the actual back, but it still goes behind before they actually gets, before it actually gets over to the homeowner's home.
Yeah, the property is eight points, uh, eight point five acres, so it's a very large parcel.
Like Councilman Saab's backyard.
So, yeah, I mean...
Front yard.
They, I mean, they would be paying like half, less than half of what they're paying now, if, if they kind of...
Less than half, we have the potential of losing a lot of money.
Yeah. And, and I mean, they've, they're, they're everywhere, they're appealing everywhere. I talked to Levonia, I talked to a bunch of different cities. And Hahneman, this, the attorneys, they're not just doing Targets, they're doing Home Depots, they're doing all these big boxes, that's what they do. They do them all at once, and they try to compare them all to each other.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Chair, real quickly, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, they, they are proven, like you said, with the Home Depot issue, uh, I was aware of that, and they resolved that in favor of the city, so they have experience in dealing it. And I think we spent over four thousand dollars debating this in the last twenty minutes, so...
I'm happy to work with whoever you guys go with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair, I'm going to change my motion to award the lowest bidder with the ten thousand cap. Uh, if I have a second, we can take it a bit, if not, you can just go.
I'll second.
On the table, we got a vote on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, do I, do we need to go?
Yeah, a motion on the table.
You can amend your... No, amended my motion to change it to the...
And if, and if it doesn't pass, then you haven't, then you have, you re-read it.
Yeah, I amended my motion, Councilman Saab, just seconded.
That was Nancy.
I seconded.
Seconded by Nancy to see four thousand dollars? Okay, all of, so amending your motion to go with the lowest bidder with a cap of ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand.
Motion made by council, amended by...
Can we do that?
Can you please name the bidder?
Councilman Ahmad, oh, named the bidder.
Named the bidder?
Yeah.
Uh, Judy and Associate.
Okay, motion amended by Councilman...
Do, do you want me to do the whole thing, or?
There it is.
Okay, uh, Councilor Chair, I move that the Dearborn High City Council award the bid for commercial appraisal, uh, services to Judy and Associate, uh, not to exceed ten thousand dollars and to, and return the bids, bond to unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor or clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, two hundred eight one seven zero zero zero, of which the current budget is twenty-five thousand, as outlined in seven dash A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman, uh, Ahmad to amend his motion, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are, um, anybody that's in, in this type of business, I'm a city council, are they allowed to vote on something like this?
Yeah, I don't think there's one appraiser here on this, on this panel.
Well, I know, I, I didn't know if he was an appraiser or not.
No, I'm not an appraiser. Being an appraiser, you have to have a hundred and twenty credit hours of college, uh, and it's like, it's like ten thousand hours of whatever.
There's a shortage. Okay, well, I guess we're going against the professionals' opinion, advice.
Sure.
You know, I mean, this is the person that deals with the city and, uh,
We have a proven track record.
Councilman, you can just vote on it. If it doesn't work, you can go back to...
Yeah.
Yeah. This might not even pass right now, then we come back and re-read it back.
All right. All in favor to choose Judith and Associate Inc., please stay at eye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
And clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Imo Biedu?
Yes.
Motion carries four three.
Next up is seven B, Ornsen Enforcement and Animal Control Director LeFevre, bid award Orange Department Vehicle Replacements.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn High City Council approve the ordinance department vehicle thirty-six month lease agreement between the city and blank, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign a necessary warrants, and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one, four two six, eight one eight, zero zero zero, of which the current budget is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. In addition, provide the mayor also, provided that the mayor also authorizes any such payments as a necessary expense. And the council authorize warrants to be issued from GL account one oh one, four twenty-six, eight one eight, zero zero zero, for the payments of the services outlined in seven B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Yeah, Honorable Councilwoman Breyer.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to reread that over again. So of which the current budget is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. In addition, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment
Yeah, that's it.
as a necessary expense.
Guys, please, nothing from the council.
To the city council authorize warrants for the payment of these services. I mean, we're just paying off a lease, why would there be any, any additional expenses?
I didn't like the wording on it.
Yeah, the, the wording, the wording is supposed to be authorize the mayor, the comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants and authorize the treasurer to pay. That way, the lease doesn't have to go in front of council every single time.
So how about we read this over and delete the last, uh, sentence? Because this is giving the mayor the full authority into this account.
No.
The last sentence, in addition, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a nec, necessary expense.
Yeah.
That's after the clerks, uh, and treasuries, uh, authorizations.
I agree with you. I, I don't agree with the wording. If you want to change it, I, I'm agreeing with that. If you want to change the wording to be...
Before we change the wording, it doesn't even say which one we're going with.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Right.
So I think, uh, I mean, the director, he gave us different options, and I think he just left it for us to decide. I mean, the, from the, from what I'm looking at him, I think going with, I think Taylor Ford would be the best bet, which is, uh, unless, if you don't correct me, Director LeFevre, uh, it's for thirty-six months for a lease of, uh, Ford Escape, that would be four hundred and eighty dollars for thirty-six months. Is that, am I correct?
Yes, that was one of the quotes we got.
That would be the cheapest. I mean, from looking at the other quotes, I think we had five oh seven, that's for an Escape. Four eighty, that's the one I'm looking at, and five forty-seven, oh, that's for a Bronco.
I gave you two to choose from. I, we don't care what we get, like I said.
What's more comfortable for you?
Well, the, the Bronco's a little bigger when we haul stuff, like we did the dog, the twenty-seven dogs. We had to put carriers in it, so we had to take a couple cars besides the trucks. I mean, size-wise, there not much difference, but like I said, we need the vehicle so we can hire the three people we're about to hire, which are in the testing process right now, so, I'm not going to be picky. Whatever you guys decide.
And what color are these? All blue?
Um, this is going to be my vehicle, and then my vehicle, which Tom saw today, is an Escape, will be going into the fleet and be marked. So they're all Escapes. The only difference is, is mine's a different color, but they'll all be Escapes that way, and they'll all be marked same, so...
What color is this one?
This is, uh, this, we're looking at six of, how many?
So the one from Taylor Ford is five forty-seven a month?
No, it's four eighty a month.
Four eighty, that's the cheapest. We're talking about sixty dollars difference in each one.
We're talking about the Bronco, not the Escape.
No, we're talking about the Escape.
Escape, what would you get a Bronco?
The Escape all-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive activity.
Yeah.
That's exactly what you said last time, Councilman, you wanted everything, all the fleet to match.
Yeah.
So how many we're getting right now? Some, how many, how many cars?
We have six right now.
Okay.
And like I said, we, we have a part-timer who's in one of them. So when we hire the three full timers, I'm going to need at least this vehicle to get everybody...
So this is only one?
This is one vehicle, just so I can get everybody in a car when we hire the three people. We had, we had seven cars, one was totaled last year. So basically, this is replacing the one that was totaled to get my fleet back up to seven. And we have an F-150 that one of the guys drive, so that is another vehicle. Like I said, this will get everybody in a car when we hire the three people.
So only approving one, though?
And we have plenty, like I said, there's plenty of money in the account to cover it, plus there's extra. In case we ever do need another vehicle, there should be at least enough for another vehicle if we hire the last person.
Do we need the last vehicle for, for this price? I mean, it's worth it.
Like I said, if I can get at least one now, so I can hire the three people, I'll be ecstatic.
Let's just hire this one right now and come back, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, let's, let's go. I'd like you to, you know, choose the one from Taylor Ford, Councilman, if you're, you're okay with that.
The Ford Escape.
The Taylor Ford, uh, Taylor Ford, the Escape, all-wheel drive.
So...
At four hundred and eighty dollars a month.
So I'll, I'll reread this, just the ordinance. I move that the Dearborn High City Council approve the ordinance department vehicle thirty-six month lease, lease agreement between the city and Taylor Ford for the two thousand twenty-five Ford Escape all-wheel drive active. Uh, VIN number ending in five two one nine, four hundred and eighty dollars a month at a thirty-six month lease, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. On behalf of the city, in addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign a necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one, four two six, eight one eight, zero zero zero, of which the current budget is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
And authorize...
As, as, as outlined in seven B.
I resecond.
Reseconded, but do we have to add an authorize the mayor comptroller?
I, it's already up here.
Okay. Okay, and then we're going with the Escape, four eighty a month, correct?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All in favor, please stay at eye. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is Crestwood High School's Homecoming Parade, twenty-twenty-five.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Saab.[1713.22]
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to Crestwood High School to hold their annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 3rd, 2025, at 5:30 with staging beginning at 5:00 PM as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is reports from city officials. City Engineer Deve Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project Payment.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and the controller and clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment for the signed contracts for the drinking water state revolving fund and the clean water revolving funds projects outlined in 9A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman?
Can we set this up for a study session?
Well, right now, there's a motion on the table. Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I want to amend my motion, take this to a study session.
Okay, motion to take this to a study session. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. So there's a motion here to refer this to a study session for City Engineer Deve Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project Payment. I mean, I just want you guys to know that this is already have a contract that has been approved. This is issuing the payment.
Is the engineer here?
I just want you guys to know that this was already approved. This is just us making the payment, but I'm
So when you guys first approved the contracts for Ferguson Water Works to do the water meter replacements and Bidiger Contractors to do the water main replacements, the clause saying authorize the mayor or controller and clerk to sign the necessary warrants, you know what?
Yes.
The problem is that, as you can see on the claims today, we had Bidiger Contractors. We had to wait to pay him two and a half weeks because the invoice was submitted right after deadline for the previous agenda. And then he's asking, well, why do I have to wait for payment? The council already approved the project, and I'm doing the work, and it's being authorized and reviewed. So I asked Engineer Devin Mariana to put this motion on so that we can at least get these vendors paid in a timely manner, because these payments span one to two months, and they could be upwards of $2 million per payment. And these vendors are fronting this money in terms of labor materials, so
I mean, looking at it
it allows us to pay in a more timely manner.
Yeah, but the problem is, is that we're giving these bids an open-ended check, is what it is.
No, the contracts have limits.
There's no oversight.
The contracts have limits.
Yeah, but there's no oversight on what's being done.
Yeah, but that's the engineering, that's on the administration, that's not on
Yeah, but it's
You can have oversight on it, but that's not
No, it's not us having oversight, you have a surety duty to make sure everything's getting done.
When you get the budget to actual, there's going to be a GL line item for water meter replacement, water main replacement, lead pipe replacement. The budget to actual each month will show you the payments up to the amount. So you will be able to say, and I could, if you
I don't think Councilman Saab's talking about the money wise. I think Councilman Saab's talking about the work that's actually being done. He's saying that there's no oversight on the work that
No, he's saying the open check amount. That's why I just want to make sure
Well, no, I mean, he's saying, you know, they have an open check, they can do whatever they want, they can take their money.
And this is going to bill.
So, but I want you to know that we have a contract, we're obligated to pay.
Council Chair, with respect to you, Mr. Deve has never come, no, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm going through the chair. I'm saying is that Mr. Deve has never come forward once and sold just the statistics or
Breakdown.
or a breakdown of anything that's been done in the city with this massive project that the city's undertaken. Now, we're seeing everybody come through and we're paying people, but what's been done? How many meters have been done? How many areas of the, from A to C to D to E have been completed?
I actually do the water meter import every week with Representative Ferguson. We average about 300 to 400 meters changed out per week, which would put us at an end date of about August 2026.
So who's the oversight on these?
I mean, I technically would be the oversight when you talk about how many meters have been replaced.
Who has oversight on the job sites? Because I have some residents.
We have, Wade Trim as a field engineering contractor, given that we don't have field engineers right now, we have one engineer and a part-timer.
How much is their bill?
How much is?
Their bill for a field engineer to be out there, so far.
I don't know the exact amount based on the contract, I can get you that value.
Okay. My second thing is, the problem is I have with these contracts that we put out, yes, we're changing people's meters, but you're not hearing about the residents. They're complaining that when they go out there, their valve is bad or something's bad with their line, and it's costing them, they want thousands of dollars to fix them because they won't touch anything else past the meter.
So I had, I had one of those residents reach out to me. I've talked to Ferguson. I don't know the workings of what the company that's changing out the meters, which is Vapo, because Ferguson isn't the one that changes it out, it's a subcontractor. I don't know what the workings are. They have noted that some of these residents have corroded or rusted pipes leaking from the meters, so they don't, it's a liability type thing. Like, they changed out the meter, but didn't do it. Some residents are saying like, hey, let me just change out the meter, I don't care, but it's kind of a safety hazard.
Or they're having to call their own plumber, which I understand. I have to keep that in mind. Their job is to only install or only license or insure to do the water meter.
Right, but we're also out trying to help residents, but also screw residents at the same time.
Yeah, but like, for example, there was a resident that I know called me and said, like, my line was broken, it was rusted, they refused to, you know, fix that.
They're not contract, now the city would have to pay to fix that technically. We would
She had ended up calling like multiple different plumbers, one ended up doing it for like 80 bucks.
Yeah.
The whole story is, I see where he's also coming from. The truth is, you're going to have some type of plumbing issue. Plumbing is not
It's not easy, it's not. I know. The whole point of this is just to pay the contractors on time. Now, we do have, like I said, Wade Trim is a field engineer inspecting and ensuring accuracy of this work. You are putting that kind of oversight with them, as well as Engineer Deve also assists with the oversight, ensuring that the bills match what we're paying.
Any other discussion?
We have a motion to refer this back to a study session. Obviously, there's a motion on the table, I didn't second or put it forward, but I'm not a fan of that. I think like, we have to pay these people that are doing the work in our city.
But, but it's not about paying them, this is about giving the okay to keep paying them without coming in front of council.
No, what we can do is, if you want to get an updated information status on what's happening, I can schedule a study session to ask Mr. Deve to show up and give us a breakdown with what Wade Trim of Walton has been happening. But I think penalizing this contractor for getting paid
I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, this is more so for the contractor, because when you do a million dollars worth of work and you front the material, as well as the labor to fix water mains, which is not an easy task, that's kind of a burden to them because that's a liability. His accounts receivable is at a 60-day period, but his accounts payable is at a 30-day period.
Okay, go ahead, Council. We can go ahead, you can amend your motion to approve it per, anytime they make a payment to send it to us with updates.
No, I want a presentation from, that's what we pay the building department and the engineering department to go out, do these projects, and you know, you have a duty too, when you pay out money, to have oversight, what's going on. We have a bill from Wade Trim here for $200,000 for a field engineer, doing what? Have they ever come and represented? Anybody say, tell us what they're doing? Do you have any oversight what they're doing? Who's out there on these jobs? How many days are they out there? How many, how do you know they're out there 30 hours a week?
I'm with you, I mean, 100%.
That's something that you're going to have, you hire contractors to do. It's never going to be a perfect world where you have somebody watching over the contract. I
To pay a third-party engineer
No, I understand, I agree with you, Councilman Saab, I'm saying it's not perfect.
And Matty, with respect, I have nothing but respect for you. To have an engineer out there paying $200, $300 an hour at $200,000 for, what is it, a couple of months? When we can hire two, three engineers, field engineers in the city, does not make sense.
And I agree with you. I'm not disagreeing with you on that point, I'm just
Guys, we're having too much back report, Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah. Councilman Saab mentioned the language, and I've always objected to the language that they put at the end of these motions. How important is that that we passed this meeting? I mean, actually, it's just a language issue, right, Councilman Saab? Basically, I mean, I mean, for this particular bill, having the mayor have carte blanche basically on future
No, no, the one before that, where the ordinance car, yeah, all the expense stuff, I took that out, that was not included in the motion. But this now, we're talking about the drinking water state revolving fund.
Yeah, this bill, like Councilman Maydun said, this is just a bill that we're paying, already agreed to contract. I know where you're coming from, though, about, you know
But the thing is, Councilman, like, you and I have been driving down, looking at the projects going on in the South End, right? Correct?
Yes.
We know there's workers out there, but we're paying some people hundreds of thousands of dollars to be out there. I don't think I've ever seen one out there.
We should try to find, look into that and see if they
Right, but that's my problem, though, is that we're paying third-party companies to be there representing the city. I don't believe they're there. And I'm saying, where is the oversight on this work, and why aren't you coming here telling us and charts or something? This is what's been done, this is what's paid. All we see is amendments, more added to the bills, and more stuff being removed from the budget without us knowing.
I will tell you that I have to agree to some degree on Councilman Saab. The other day, I was in the South End, and I was stuck between a ramp truck and somebody pouring cement. And there was a bunch of workers to my left. And I said, oh, sir, I'm stuck. Can one of the trucks, you know, let me out? And he said, it's going to be about 20 minutes. I said, come on, man, please, I don't want to wait 20 minutes. It's a true story, this happened on Saturday. It was 4th of July weekend on Saturday. And I said, you know, I really, I don't have 20 minutes to wait. He said, grab on the grass. I said, that's illegal.
That's what DT said.
I said, that's absolutely illegal. I said, who, what are you doing? You can't be telling residents to drive and vandalize people's grass and properties. I said, you can't do that. I said, who do you work for? He said, I work for myself. And I said, okay, what's your company name? And he gave me a different company name. And I said, I've never heard of this company. I said, who subcontracted you? He said, Proline. I said, so you were never hired by the city of Dearborn Heights? And he said, no. I was hired by Proline, but we hired Proline for a million dollars. Proline tells them, hey, here's $200,000, go do the work, and they sit at home with $800,000 in their pocket. Just want to give you guys an update of kind of some of the oversight. But this here specifically, the city engineer, the drinking water state revolution fund, this guy bought the material, did the work, and whatnot. So my only thought is, I agree with Councilman Saab, there definitely needs to be a study session of everything that's taken out of the city. Residents need to know, there's no reason why we're not giving public updates from our mayor, from our city engineer. Hey, it's Mr. Deve, I'm here on Annapolis Street, I'm here on this street, I'm here on Detroit Street, I'm here on Amboy Street. There's no reason why our administration is not talking to the residents. Forget the council, I know you don't like us. Man, you're not like your residents either? But it sucks that we have to beg for some type of update. You know, but when the media comes, we're so quick to pull out this long piece of paper and say, look, look, look at the projects we're working on, look at the projects. Where are they? How come the residents don't know? Yeah, madam, sorry, madam.
Yeah, that's okay.
Councilwoman Breyer.
Why don't we vote on the original one and then decide if we need an amended one?
Well, you know what? I don't know, the more I see it, my emotions gets the best of me sometimes. I get it, this guy needs to get paid.
No, man, there's So I'm going to leave it at this. You cannot pay without oversight versed on having work progress payments. You know, you cannot, this is an open-ended, this is open-ended. I don't think anybody here would agree to have anything open-ended.
All right, well, we have a motion on the table to refer this back to the administration and to not pay this contractor and to take it to a study session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to send this back, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
And clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Moby Doon?
No.
Motion does carry four to three.
That's the beautiful thing of democracy. Good job, Councilman. Next up, George, get with me so that we can study this, schedule this to next. Let's just put it on for next Tuesday, 6 o'clock. Thank you. Next up is Controller's Office Budget Amendment.
Council Chair?
What is it?
5 o'clock before the next meeting?
He said 5 o'clock before the next meeting.
We could do that. We could do 5 o'clock for the next meeting. You guys want to take next Tuesday off? I'll give you a break. All right, we'll do
5 o'clock before the next meeting? Right now, 5 o'clock before the next meeting?
The 27th?
Okay.
Yeah, July 27th.
27?
No.
No.
22nd.
22nd.
22nd, I was saying
But add this still back, the 25th, at 5 o'clock. But also add this back also to the next agenda. Thank you.
Do you? And I'm just asking, a close session for the 15th?
You do. We actually can't do it at 5 o'clock.
Well, that would be, I'm sorry.
It's next week.
That's next week. The special meeting, I just was bringing that to your attention.
All right, we do have a legal law
That might not be as soon.
Oh, so we have to be here anyway. What time is it?
5:30.
5:30. I don't know that one.
5:30.
Is it 5:30?
5:30. We can do the study session right after, since you're already here. Let's just do that.
What's the date?
What do we have earlier?
Next Tuesday, we have a study session and a close session, a special meeting at 5:30 regarding some legal law
And immediately followed by the study session for this, and then you'll put the invoice or whatever the outcome is, the study session on the 22nd agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we get 9B? I guess someone to read 9B.
Yeah, Council Chair?
Go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendments to the fire department budget and controller office budget. Fire budget, department account
Fire grant expense?
Start with the next line.
Well, fire grant expense 101335940075. Current budget $40,000, amended budget $125,884. Amended amount, I'm sorry, amended budget would be $165,184, remaining balance would be $165,184. The fire grant revenue, account number 101000635000. Current budget is $41,000, amended amount is $125,184. The amended budget is $166,184, remaining balance would be $166,184. Notes, the fire department gear grant revenue and expenses offset, no fund balance used. Salaries, account number 101223706000. Current budget $386,287. Amended amount $20,000, amended budget $366,287. Remaining balance is $366,287. Part-time, GL account number 10122307, I'm sorry, 101223707100. Current budget is zero, amended amount is 20,000, amended budget is 20,000, remaining balance is 20,000. Notes, part-time employees to cover vacant position responsibilities, no fund balance used, is outlined in 9B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman, I'm sorry, motion made by Councilman Saab, and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Bydun, help me understand the first box. So there's two accounts, one is a revenue and one is an expense.
So
So the same amount of money, correct?
Yes.
But the way you posted here, it seems like both of them has the same amount now. Shouldn't we take one from one account, take it to the other?
So with a grant, you increase the expense and increase the revenue. You're not taking from the revenue because the revenue didn't exist before you did this amendment.
Okay.
So when you are aware of the revenue coming in, and then you're able to expand that revenue because it's a restricted grant revenue, it's specifically for gear, the fire department gear, you increase the revenue account so that increases the revenue for the year, but then you expand the same expense, so it's a net zero difference. It's a formality amendment, just so at the end of the year, when you look at the budget to actual, you see the revenue is increased, but the expense is also increased.
But we're talking the same money, the $125,000.
Yes. Now, if they don't expand it all in this year, then we can make an amendment, we can roll it over to next year and an amendment.
Okay. Any more discussion? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ayes have it. Moving on to 9C, Director Cooper, BSNA Cloud Agreement and Budget Amendments. Do I have a motion?
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the software and services agreement for BSNA Cloud between the city and BSNA Software for a cost not to exceed $348,390 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants per the payment schedule and the treasurer to issue payment from account 101258728001. Additionally, authorize the controller to issue the attached budget amendments to cover these. Okay, bear with me, this is long.
Do we have to read all of this?
No, it's outlined in 9C. It's over 20 lines.
Yeah, it just says them.
Okay.
It'll be in the minutes.
But the note says, BSNA Cloud Conversion Cost Amendment, no fund balance used, that's important.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman?
Councilman, I have a question for the director. These departments here, this money that's coming out of their 3,000, 2,000, 20,000, recreation utilities, and so on, I ask that if any of this money coming out can affect any department's hiring process, or is it coming out of the general funds of these departments?
You want it?
So it's coming out of general fund GL numbers that already had a budget for the fiscal year. No fund balance is going to be used based on
I'm not saying fund balance, I'm saying the budget right now. So we have people that we said we wanted hired.
Oh, no.
If we take the $3,000 and we come back and you guys say, well, we couldn't hire them because we used the money to do this, I'm putting it on the record right now to you and Cooper.
For which
For ordinance?
Ordinance.
For contractual services, recreation department, any services here that are going to to affect any hiring process.
Services aren't hiring people.
That's contractual services. That's only for the leased vehicles.
I know, but the budget falls down. What they do is they say at the end of the day, it's followed to the available budget.
I don't think they will. Go ahead.
I'm not getting.
So he's basically saying if we do this amendment, is it going to affect any hiring, any department?
No, I purposely did not touch any salary line item. There's a couple of part-time line items, which part-time is not any position within the city. That's just general labor that you hire as needed.
Okay.
So why, so why for all the question all of a sudden? I'm, I'm looking here, and these are food for thought questions if you want to answer them.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
The mayor's office, they fought for this travel and education for the past two years on here. All of a sudden, now it's down to 500.
No, it's only taking 500 away. You still have 3,000.
And then the mayor's part-time office, you're amending 1,500, right?
Yeah. What I tried doing is, I don't know if you were, were you here during that study session? As Councilman Ahmad stated, I kind of took chunks out of certain departments. And he wanted me to do a more smoothed out, a little bit from here, a little bit from here type deal. That way, our department doesn't feel like they got singled out because they have a little bit more funds in terms of allocation. So what I did was I pretty much did 1,000 here, 2,000 here, 1,000 here. There's only a few accounts that are larger, but that's because they had a larger budget to begin with. And most of them are general government.
Thank you, Matty. I think you did a great job.
Council, Council Proton.
Go ahead.
To our clerk, then taking this money out of election part-time and material and supply, would it affect your elections?
Absolutely.
I think we'll be okay and.
185. You're still gonna, she still has 185 in the budget for.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just making sure that you're aware.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The 5,000, I think will be good right now, Councilman. However, if we do have any extra elections, there could be a special election, then that would have probably affect us. And then I would have to come back to you and ask you that. Okay? And the same thing really with election and supply, the materials and supplies. If, I think we go to be okay with August and November. Towards the end of the next fiscal year, we will start preparing for the next August election, which will be gubernatorial, so we're gonna have to find out.
Thank you.
But I think we'll be okay right now.
So.
Thank you for asking.
So a couple more questions about a few more items. One is workers' comp. I mean, the liability to city employees enormous. Why are we taking $16,000 out of it?
So the workers' comp generally ranges from 350 to 400,000. We had, we increased it to 500,000 because this year we had a couple very bad injuries on job sites. But overall, I don't believe that the historical trend ranges from 300 to 400,000.
Okay. Then my next thing was the general government owned properties. Why are we always hitting that account? When, when, and, and, and I want to, and I want to put this, and I'm not trying to shame anybody.
Yeah.
We keep taking money out of this account for city-owned properties, but those crap properties look like crap.
Yeah.
So we're taking money, using them other things, but letting these properties deteriorate, letting weeds grow, busted fences, trash, couches inside driveways on these city properties that are not maintained. But we're gonna always be, we're gonna always defund this account on multiple different items that we're trying to do in the city.
So that city-owned property account is actually for the purchases of city-owned power, like properties. The maintenance is in all their GL numbers. And if you have issues with like maintenance on certain types of properties, it usually comes out of DPW budget.
Is this a, is this a yearly expense?
So this right here is to cover the initial conversion. So you have about $60,000 in project management, meaning the implementation, and then 60,000.
One-time cost.
Yeah, one-time 60,000, and then the 60,000 for training. Now, that 60,000 for training is on the high end of training types, type of cost. We might be lower depending on how well our employees can receive the information in the training that they're going to be receiving.
I, I know, and now.
Councilor Chair.
I wasn't here for the study session, but I know that it was about 170,000 yearly, right?
Correct. 170, 175, 650 to be exact.
Can we afford 175 every single year, you think? I mean, like, listen, guys, we just fought over $4,000.
The thing is, Councilor, with this one, we have no choice. They're moving from one system to a cloud system that they're gonna stop this one. So the whole city is all linked to this BSNA. Even the assessor, the clerk, so the city needs it.
Let's just say, let, let, let me, I know I wasn't here, I'm sorry. Please forgive me that I was not available. I was on. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you have. Say, we don't end up doing it. What happens? I'll say, over time, the price is only going to go up. Their project manager fees, I've already negotiated with them to get their, their training fees down, you know, with it. It's going to be an inevitable cost. The longer we wait, the more expensive it will get.
Director, I'm sorry. I think the Councilor Chair question is, if we don't go with BSNA, what's our alternative? That's, that's his question. What can we do?
Some other com- well, again, assessing has to be BSNA. The state only coordinates with BSNA with it. Like I said in the study session, are there other companies that kind of do a BSNA? A lot of individual companies. We would then have to go from one company like BSNA to multiple companies and then work and configure and maintain the communications between them. When I've spoken to other directors from other cities, they have a team of people that maintain that connection and maintain the APIs so that all these can communicate. I, I'm one person, you know, you know, with this. Is, is it, is it a large expense? Yes. But I, I want to remind that BSNA is the backbone of everything that we do in this, in this city to maintain the information. It's, it is our cash receiving, is our tax, is our assessing, it is our building license, animal license, building departments, accounts payable, general ledger. This is the software that every staff member basically uses, I'll say 95% of the time. So, and, and the, the improvements, you know, I, I get an example using the study session. The treasurer herself was contacting BSNA wanting to be able to do something. And they said, we can do that, but we can't do it in the .NET. We can only do that in the cloud because .NET is an older language. And, you know, and sort of be able to make the improvements. They stopped years ago making any improvements to the, they're doing the absolute bare minimum for .NET with the expectations of, hey, we're, we're, we're moving to the cloud. You want the improvements that can have with it, the efficiencies that we can develop with this. And keep in mind that this, that this cost, again, it's, the, the, the money that's there, it, it is yearly cost. There is a lot of upfront costs. That is the high end of what that potential upfront cost. It is a maximum value. Whether we incorporate the travel, the potential of travel costs that we have to do with BSNA, they're in Bath, Michigan, that's like Lansing area. We'd actually have to pay for them to come down if we want to do the training them onsite. We go virtual training. That would be, help reduce those costs there. With the, we wouldn't look to truly implement this until August of 2026. I want to say that, too. We are trying to spread this out and do this right with all the departments, okay? So we can improve the efficiencies, improve our best practices in the city. Because when we do that, that is going to help the residents with what we do. You know? We have not updated our procedures in at least the three years that I've, that I've been here. And this will be an opportunity to be that catalyst to change the inner workings of this city to better help the residents.
Okay. If I may, Councilman.
Councilor Chair.
If I may, real quick, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yep.
I don't like that our comptroller training is going from 12,500 to 500.
Can I say, they're one of the departments that use BSNA the most. Basically, it's kind of like saying, hey, they're now going to get retrained in their procedures to do their job in BSNA in the cloud version.
I understand that. But I also don't like the fact that we're completely, look, our controllers, right now, we've been through 25. And, you know, and I'm not trying to make this a back and forth, all right?
No, I'm not.
It's, please.
I'm not.
I feel like every time that we meet, you get up here and speak, it's like, no, but this is why I'm doing it. Comptroller is a very, very important position in the city.
Yeah.
For us to say we're giving them no training in all of 2025, it's, it's not gonna fly with me. I'm okay with figuring this out, but to come back and say that the comptroller has only $500 in training when they had 12,500, really is bothering me. So, and so this was something, we need to figure other solutions. And then also kind of going after the fire department's contractual services. Even if it's a dollar, I'm not ready to touch anything from the fire department.
I mean, we can, again, go back, but for the comptroller, the 12,000 was actually for the anticipating education that the previous comptroller was going to be taking, but she's no longer with us. I, I owe myself.
Training, not, not paying for college.
Well, that's, that's what was budgeted for. That training line item is for education and training.
That actually makes me feel better.
Okay. So I, that's why I was like, hey, because it was used for that, let's put it into something that the city can benefit from instead of myself. Because I, I'm, I'm the proponent for, hey, I understand the city's in a financial situation that they can't afford certain educational expenses, so I'm not going to take educational classes right now. I'd, I've learned on the job and I understand that the, the experiences on the job are just as valuable as classroom education. So I did not want to leave that in there and instead put it towards something for the betterment of the city.
It, it, I'm okay with it, but I think we need to figure out.
I mean, look, the, the 134.
I don't like touching anything for the fire police and the fact that we're digging in 2,500 to the, to the fire department and just.
I can remove the fire department. It will still be within budget for the training. So I can remove that completely if we want to remove that.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, and then, how are you? Okay.
Councilor Chair.
Did you check with the fire chief if that's fine?
He said.
Yep.
He said it's fine.
We, 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 we shared this budget with all the directors beforehand, trying to make sure that everyone was, was okay. I can see that he actually is connected right now, you know, just to get it, to get it from him.
You can unmute if you want, Madam Clerk. Councilor Chair, we, they had a different amendment last time, and I asked them to go ahead and change it because they had something from the court.
And the police.
And the police. I was like, you know what? Make sure, work on something else, double check with all the directors. But this is something that we have no choi- we have a choice, but it's going to be more expensive choice. Because we still need the BSNA anyway for the assessor's office. If we go for a different route and change the whole city with a different software, oh, it's going to cost us way more money. So it's like something like we need to do, so.
Can we remove the, can we, can we not mess with the fire department's?
I can remove it. It, it will, will still be within budget if you remove that, just that one.
Let's, let's leave there. I'm not comfortable touching.
No, I, I understand.
And again, I want to, I want to stress, this is the high level of expense. It's not to exceed that level. We, we do our training properly. We, we take, again, that 13 months to truly work and implement this as a city, that, that training potentially, again, they don't travel here, their travel expenses is $50,000.
Are you gonna still, Director, I know you mentioned last time, are you gonna still implement training for the directors of the department? Then those direct, the director department will train the employees or?
I believe, I believe a good mixture will be our best bet. You know, again, in each department, determine what is going to best suit them about train the trainer kind of model, training all, all the people, you know, individually. That is something that 13 months, we will get to go through and, and discuss internally what's going to be our best direction. I, I believe mixing the, everyone learns differently. Mixing that is going to be the best.
I still remember the training was around 60 or?
So it's pretty much rate, rate and half, they're estimated was, the BSNA annual will be 175, and then their training, the implementation, everything was another 175, broken up over two payments, you know, to try to spread that cost over actually the fiscal years. I, I know this is a lot of money, but I, I really want to stress that going this route and truly being able to update the process that we do is only going to help the residents, you know, with this. If I, if I or anybody, we can save our departments and our workers and give them more, five minutes a day, that adds up so they can better help and serve the residents. We then can actually use this where more departments can use it across the board and the workflow, so we don't have any mistakes. And we actually get to create the automation that, to be frank, should already be there, but just aren't for however many reasons there might be. This is a process that we can go through and, and, and set this up. Again, as a catalyst.
Hello? Yes. Councilman?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Couple things, I'm, I'm confused why these two are on the same motion. BSNA and then the budget amendments. And our, our current contract with BSNA, how long is that, how long is that?
It, it's, it's basically, it's annual BS, BSNA is a service that every year.
What's, what dates?
What's that?
What's the date? Is it coming up this month, next month? Didn't we just do one?
BSNA got, it depends on the module. So right now, the .NET programs, there's, there's like 13 modules that we pay for, applications. Each one is individually, some have different dates. The big bulk of them was, I believe in May.
I think it was in May.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're making a contract with these guys and shouldn't it say, you know, the contract includes any updates?
It does, always. It does say that, sir. It does, always, it does say that, sir.
Paying three hundred thousand plus for these updates, or new program, I mean, not to, not to pick on your department, but the IT department, I, I don't know, I mean, it's always adding stuff, you know, it comes with this, you know, X amount of dollars, and then it's always add more, add more, add more, I mean, we, we need it, I think, I'm, I'm not a big IT guy, obviously, but, um, it's all, you know, it's always, okay, hey, guess what, we're going to get it for this cheap, and then later it's add-on, 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 you know, and, I don't, this is, this, this is something that they should offer us in their original contract. It's like when we do a cement job, you know, a street, and, yeah, they bid on the street, we're going to do a street, and then all these add-ons, and we always complain about those. I, I just confused why, you know, this isn't something that we see, didn't foresee, or isn't in the contract that any upgrades like this would be, you know, added into the contract? It's not chump change.
No, it's not, no, it's not, sir. It, it, this, so, this is a, a major platform switch for, we have, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to attend the study session, basically, we have a BSNA server here that we have to maintain and control, that houses all the financial information of the city, all the business license, everything, we have to maintain. By going, by going to the cloud, um, we're kind of giving the information a little bit more to BSNA themselves, we don't have to maintain that server, you know, anymore, um, and it's no longer built in that dot net, which it uses, again, I'm going to get a little technical, so I apologize, an SQL server that has to communicate with all different computers, we're all trying to connect with it, um, dot net's an old program, this is, you know, programming, this is a complete revamp of the system, in the terms of every time that we, we go with BSNA, it does say, because we, we get the updates, right now in the dot net, they basically do an updates twice a month, we have to manually go in, we have to make sure the updates are applied, whether it's something because, hey, tax is different, or something for assess is different, if we don't apply it, it can show off our, mess up our calculations. Now with the cloud, all that's instant, you basically refresh the window, the web browser, we get the updates right then and there, you know, with it. So the updates are included, all this, this is just such a major, major platform change with it, that it's a, it's a new contract. We were kind of grandfathered in some old ones too, where now, again, with this upgrade, that's why some of the costs have, have increased.
During budget season, why wasn't this discovered or thought up?
We were still in the middle of it, we did, we didn't have, you know, I, I understand, I kind of said that in the study session, we are still in the middle of, of seeing if this is truly a plat, you know, what we really wanted to go for, working with BSNA, trying to get the best cost for us, so we didn't, we didn't know at that exact time.
What, what GL account is that?
So BSNA actually comes out, if you look at the budget amendment sheet, it actually comes out of that top line item, which is the IT services, one oh one, two five eight, seven two eight, that's what BSNA would come out of, so basically, everything below that would go into that account so that we could pay for, uh, BSNA, because that's what currently pays up, you know, we pay BSNA out of.
So all these deductions on all these other, like the services and, uh, training and, you know.
Yes.
That, but, I added those up and that doesn't come up to that much money, though.
Yeah, it does.
Does it?
Exactly.
Comes up to three hundred and eighty-five thousand.
No, 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 no.
One thirty-four.
Hundred and thirty-four thousand, sir.
The difference.
No, no, Councilman.
Okay, yeah, I did, it does, it does add, it does add to one thirty-four.
Adds to one thirty-four.
Yeah, I, I did add it, okay.
And I, my name is on it, because someone's name had to be kind of on this, I really got to honestly say, this is a citywide, every department is, is BSNA and uses this, you know, just my name's attached to it, because.
Is this what every city uses, does every city use BSNA or their other companies?
Pretty, pretty much, sir, if you actually go to BSNA online and look at their list, they're not just a Michigan company, they are across the country. Um, I, I, again, I'm using the last reference, um, more cities are moving to the BSNA cloud, great example is Dearborn, they had their own proprietary software, basically something that they wrote themselves, they tried the, the Google thing, didn't work, they're going to BSNA.
How they stopped Google?
For what they wanted to do with this part of it, so Google, they have a whole humongous contract with, with Google, but they thought they could do a little bit more with it, now it's, now they are going to BSNA cloud, right now, I'm not sure if they're a hundred percent live with it.
Director, okay. Um, I had a discussion this past weekend with some family members about the cloud, and no one knows what the cloud is, I mean, what is the cloud, is it a, a server in some guy's basement somewhere? Is it, you know, is it one, is it in Paris, or is it in England?
Throughout the country, throughout, you know.
So it's, it's just, it's just, it's just a, a machine in, in a room in a building somewhere.
No. These Mike, these Microsoft, it's actually Microsoft Azure servers that actually it's going on, those are Microsoft, those are actually usually like, in the bottom of the ocean.
Yeah, it, it, it just puts it into a memory, somewhere.
It's a, it is a computer, they're one hundred percent.
It's a computer you put into a memory.
That's backed up multiple sites, the data is secure, something goes down here, boom, instantly it connects to another one, so we don't lose that data.
So the cloud is, there's thousands of different owned clouds.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not just one cloud out there and everybody puts our information into it, so, what, they call it, why do they, why do they call it a cloud, and this should be into our memory?
Some marketing genius, long time ago.
Because it's over the internet, Councilman, anything you, it's like, you get all the information from their server over the internet.
Well, I know what it is, but, you know, is it, is it some guy's basement, each cloud's different, the cloud, I mean, where's the Facebook cloud, where's this cloud, I mean, this is a cloud that BSNA owns this cloud?
It's a marketing term.
They own this cloud, right?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it, it's a marketing term.
It's not the cloud, it's just in their, in the computer, in their memory.
Correct, sir. Good questions.
No, I know, yeah, we, we debated it for a while around a campfire.
Yep.
I don't know, man, I kind of feel like Councilman once was onto something, where is this guy, who is this cloud guy?
Uh, let's take this for a vote.
Take it for a vote. All right, any other discussion? All right, Lou said stop, Tom, so we're going to stop. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? How happy Cooper is, look at him, his face is cheeks.
This, I, I, again, I'm going to keep on saying, this is a major upgrade to the city and our services, it's going to be.
This will make us work a lot more efficiently, save us a lot of money.
Thank you, nine, as you all say here, next up, nine D Human Resource Director Fisher, DPW Supervisors Association Contract Extension.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the extension of the agreement between the city and Dearborn Heights DPW Supervisors Association on a day-to-day basis until a new agreement is reached and approved as outlined in nine dash D.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Uh, just want to give a quick update on this, that I spoke with them, I spoke with our Chief of Staff, this is just honoring this current contract until they come up with some type of agreement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. No, you left it. I would like you to take it out, though.
The, the chief is okay with it, but.
I, I don't want anybody touching police and fires money, but Mr. Cooper always gets away with it somehow.
Yeah.
Next up is Library Director McCaffrey, Library Budget Amendment.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendments to the library budget. Increase one hundred and seven thousand to revenue line seven three eight, zero 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 five four eight grants, it changes from zero to one hundred and seven thousand. Increase one hundred and seven thousand to expense line seven three eight, seven three eight, eight zero eight awarded grants, which changes from zero to one hundred and seven thousand. Increase one hundred and sixty-three thousand to revenue line seven three eight, zero 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 six eight six, state aid slash penal fines, that changes from one hundred thousand to two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And increase one sixty-three thousand to expense line seven three eight, seven three eight, nine eight one, capital outlay, which changes from two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty, to four hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty. Revenue from these lines will be used to make early literacy kits, acquire foreign language materials, improve and add PC infrastructure grants, and help remodel the bathroom. Additional state aid is outlined in nine E.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constant. Uh, any discussion, I just want to open it up, once again, recognize our, um, Building Director, always goes above and beyond, very transparent. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, library, library, he always goes above and beyond, he's extremely, extremely tentative to the council, and just very transparent, and I, and I absolutely love this guy, I absolutely love him, and so I thank you so much for this, Director McCaffrey, I mean.
Always on top of his game.
He is the best, uh, radio voice, I think, in the state. So. But I do, I do want to just appreciate him on that, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those, let's do it again, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Ever seen our, uh, IT Director so happy?
Yeah, this, this is huge for the state.
Next up is.
You'd be allowed to work.
Good.
Good.
Next up is nine F Library Director McCaffrey, Early Literacy Grant Project.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the payment for books for reading kits from Book Depot for costs not to exceed twenty-six thousand, to be paid from account number seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh two. This will be funded completely through the thirteenth district grant, which has funds remaining to cover all costs for the project, as outlined in nine F.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Brier. Any other discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Can you just step up to the mic and say that, please? Seven three eight, eight oh eight. Eight oh eight.
Corrected.
As in after seven and before nine.
Eight oh eight?
Yes. I think it was a typo.
Last three digits.
Correct, taken from line seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh eight. Thank you. It was a small typo.
As noted.
Yep.
Is that thirteenth district, is that thirteenth congressional district, or is that something else?
Yes, it actually was a thirteenth district grant from a few years ago, actually, and we're in the last phase of spending that money, so, yeah.
Let's do it.
Counselor Chair, any other discussion?
Yes, I ran into the Director today, uh, him and one was in place, delivering, uh, items, can you, I mean, what was, what was, what were you delivering today?
Uh, we were delivering activity boxes to about four hundred homes, um, and over eleven hundred, uh, items, um, so, um, yeah, that's what we were doing, and, um, these, um, literacy kits are going to be going to schools, so we can hopefully improve some reading scores, um, get those up.
Tell you, man. This guy doesn't just sit in the office.
No, he does not, honestly.
He's out beating the streets, I'll tell you.
I'll tell you, Council, uh, Councilman Wenzel, one day I was doing a ride along with a police officer and they had an incident at the library, man, what does he have to go through every day? I'm telling you, it's the busiest daycare, it's the busiest daycare in the county.
Well, thanks.
I'm telling you.
Dr. McCaffrey, we're really thankful and grateful for you.
All right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Counselor Chair.
I have a, a, a quick question about item, um, uh, nine C, we voted on, I think it should be put in the minutes that we are not touching the fire department part, because we just okay, I don't think it was put in the motion.
It was it.
Was it?
It was Ezra, I think they're okay, the chief approved it.
The chief approved it.
Okay, we're, okay, we're doing it Ezra, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, if Mandy wants to take it out, that would be great. Thank you. Next up is, uh, petition from citizens, none.
And also Ms. Saab, what about you?
Then we have orances and resolutions.
That's what I'm saying, I want to suspend.
After the orance resolution, yeah. Treasurer Hicks Clayton, collection of CSO Basin, SRF five four three zero, zero two funds.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the collection of CSO Basin, SRF five four three zero, dash zero two funds resolution, resolving the following. Let it be resolved, the administration has not resolved this matter. The City Council, by adoption of the resolution, the Treasurer will be the point of contact. Furthermore, grant the Treasurer the authorization to pursue and collect the funds from Wayne County, reaching a resolution for the City of Dearborn Heights by resolution on July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I, I would like to say, oh.
I'd like the Controller to be involved in this.
Oh, I was going to say, I still think the clerk, the mayor, the Controller should still also be a point of contact, and not only the Treasurer, but.
Yeah.
I think the more we have, you could take this on, but I don't think that you should be the only person that they can communicate with.
Absolutely.
So I would like to amend this to allow the Controller, the mayor, and the clerk.
Treasurer, Controller, and Mayor.
Counselor Chair, was there a second on that motion?
No, not yet.
No, not yet.
Okay.
So we're reading on, before we second it, so whoever, so can you add that to your motion?
Right, that's it, let's make it Treasurer, Controller, and Mayor.
And clerk.
And clerk, okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So, motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on this? I think this is there, I think this is open, and I think this is X money that belongs to the, uh, the City of Dearborn Heights, and I believe, uh, Madam Treasurer, that you're doing your due diligence, and you're going out and you're bringing this money back home to our residents.
And the Treasurer is the receivables and of the city.
That's okay, we can allow, we can allow the communication to be spread out.
I agree, my point was, and by the way, the resolution does not mistake any facts, we don't have the money yet, so it has not been resolved, okay, that's not, all the other information is accurate in here, you've got the financial reports from Wayne County. I did want to bring forward a sample bond book, this is our twenty-one bond book for the study, when you look inside it, and I can pass it around, as long as you promise to give it back to me, but all the signatures in it, Madam Clerks is in there? Yes, because you do the resolutions and that with the council, uh, the mayor and the Treasurer. The only time in five years the Controller's office was included was through, and God rest his soul, Badri Jawad, because we CC'd him. I'm just being honest with you.
Thank you, we have a motion here on the table.
Thank you.
Motion made by Council, Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Saab, and to allow the mayor, the Controller, and the clerk to also take part in this, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, Councilman Saab.
Council, uh, Counselor Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules and rescind a, uh.
Hold on, you just got to put a motion to suspend the rules.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion made by Councilman Saab to suspend the rules, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Wenzel, hang on, suspend, Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Wenzel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, next up is going to be.
Eleven B.
Um, what can we make this on it, can we make it under eleven B?
Um.
B.
Eleven B?
I'm waiting for Councilman Ahmad to give it.
It's not a resolution, it's not a resolution, so.
Oh, so then we'll take it.
I would say under city officials, but we'll just take.
We'll just go to, we'll go to nine?
Yes.
Whatever the next.
Nine G.
I'm sorry.
Nine G, I don't know, I was having a brain fart. Nine G? Okay, now, would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind motion number, uh, twenty-five dash three twenty-six for the location of.
What is that number again?
Two five, dash three two six, that is the location of the Beach Davy New Fire Station. And I just want to, this is, and I want to be clear on one thing with this motion, I'm not removing my vote, because I think the location is a bad location, I'm removing my vote is because we put a condition to the vote, and I stood to the residents and said I will be part of the process from A to Z, and this administration walked out of this meeting with their eyes closed and ears shut, and just forgot about anything, and they want to control what happens. So unfortunately, for our amazing fire department, which they know we want to, if I, and I say this again, if we can build on the Taj Mahal, I would, and the fire department is going to get what they want, not what this administration wants, what they want, they're the ones going to be living there and operating out of it, and not based on people they know, we want professionals out there in the bus companies to do it, and if it's going to hold back a few months, let it be, but we're not going to learn back from past mistakes and the disasters the city's currently following, just like the park project and every other project going on in the city, so, this again.
You're, you're, you're having a discussion.
But this is my motion, I'm pointing it on the record.
Your motion is not, is not a discussion.
Well, my motion is to rescind the vote, my vote, on the fire station.
I have, I have, I have motion made by Councilman Saab, I need a, I need a second. Seconded by Councilman Wenzel, to rescind twenty-five, three two six of the placement of the fire station. Now, any discussion? You said your part.
This, this is a classic example of non-transparency, this fire station. We, no one, it's been over a year, and no one has any idea, not even a artist rendering on a napkin of what this building is. City of Livonia is putting something forward right now where they want to spend a bunch of money, we do, they have drawings and everything of what their fire, they're redoing their fire station, what the fire station looks like, you know, that one guy had a little model of it, I mean, we, we have no idea, is it two-story, one-story, you know, flat roof, pitched roof, you know, metal roof, you know, I mean, we have no idea.
This is, this was the starting process to do it, but apparently, from receiving emails from the administration and the city attorney, saying that we would not be a part of it, and that's going to be aligned for the condition I made during my meeting, that I want it to be from part A to B, this had nothing to do with me ever, what they're claiming, negotiating, I want to sit in these meetings and just sit and take notes, I want to be in every single meeting for transparency, because if Sue called me, or Vince called me, or Jack called me, or Bob called me, I'd say one, two, three.
Yep.
Because you can never get away, nothing with this administration, and they don't want that, there's a reason why they don't want it, whatever they're hiding, whatever deals is being made, they don't want us a part of it, that's the end of the story, and then, Counselor Chair, to, to add to my motion, if you can sign it, I want to restrict all these funds from being used towards anything, until it's bought back in front of council for approval.
It's been restricted.
No, 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 I understand, any types of fund, towards the new fire department.
Okay, well, right now, the first motion is to rescind.
Yes.
Well, we have to, we have to do that, Roger, did you want to say something?
Yes, Counselor Chair, uh, I think what I've heard is that it's a, the only reason I'm jumping in now, I said in the beginning, he's mentioned the city attorney, I've explained that it's not about Councilman Saab, I trust the professionals, the fire chief that was in the meeting, I didn't have, I was, didn't have a chance to go to the last, the meeting that they had, but I trusted City Engineer Dib, I trust Fire Chief Brogan, and what they're doing, what they're capable of doing, they had one more, um, gentleman from the fire department, um, of course, the legal department will look over the contracts, I don't think, as a necessity, that you need Councilman Saab in every meeting, taking notes, and whatever's going to be distributed, because there's confidentiality in every agreement. Now, as to the accusations that are being thrown out, I think they're frivolous, they're malicious, and they're speaking of a sense of paranoia that this administration, nobody can be trusted. Our fire chief can't be trusted, our city engineer cannot be trusted, our fire people, the professionals can't be trusted, only Mr. Saab can be trusted. Well, that speaks of, I'm not gonna say incompetence, but it speaks of lack of understanding of leadership and trusting your people. Now, do what you have to do. I think that how, um, the message that I gave to him is you're gonna be voting on that later on, uh, when the contract comes. At that point, you can revoke or stop the contract, but the process and the people involved are above reproach. There's no indication of anything, uh, in, indicating anything fraudulent or criminal in any of our, our professionals that are hired. And I'm sick and tired of these attacks on the administration and lack of trust. That's why we're in the position we are in with a lot of litigation. Now, if we understand what we, we hire people do, let them speak and do what they're supposed to do.
Guys, port of war, let us do this.
That's what we're supposed to do. Trust the people we hire and work with them. Now, if you want to rescind it, you do what you have to do. It's against my advice. I think you passed a good vote. You made a decision. It's a great location. I trust Fire Chief Brogan. I trust our firefighters. I trust our police officers. I trust our leadership. And I'm saying that how, do not speculate and accuse people of things that's not true, sir. You do not have to be part of it, but you will have to say, as the charter 9.5 dictates, the charter says that how the mayor brings provisions and the contracts to the city council, just like what we had with, with Crestwood last week. I said, you cannot denote, negotiate it, and then turn around and vote on it. It's a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Roger. You all done here?
Yeah.
I just want to say something. Um, that's okay, because I think, like you, I think everybody here trusts our fire chief, trusts the work, and this was passed. All Councilmen Saab was, trust him like you trust everybody else, but it seems like the issue was that you guys didn't trust Councilman Saab to be in the rooms on whatever you, decisions you guys were making. And it's not that Councilman Saab wanted to make the decision, but at least he can say, I was just in this meeting, you know, you know, Madam Treasurer, Madam Clerk, Councilman Wenzel, Councilman Baydoun, Sue Kaminsky, Lou, Rooster Pepe, guys, this is what was set. But for some odd reason, you guys are so scared of the, of the notion of saying, we don't want, we don't want anybody to know what's happening. You guys can just look at the contract after. No. Our, our, all this was, was talking about like, you know, an open door policy, transparency, that, that's all this was, and, and we, this was the bridge that brings the administration and the council together. And I really believe you guys dropped the ball here, man. You know, regardless, I voted no. Councilman Saab did his research, and he said, you know what? We're gonna move forward on this. Let's, let's talk about this. I, I don't know why Mr. Dibb and you and everybody, I don't believe the chief, Fire Chief. I think the Fire Chief would have been okay with Councilman Saab being there. I mean, I think Councilwoman, Councilwoman Breyer could have went, Councilwoman Miloski Maxwell could have went, I think Councilman, uh, Tom Wenzel could have went. I think anybody, I think residents should be able to go. What do we got to hide? Hey, guys, this is what we're working on. This is what we have going on. But if once we start becoming secretive, that's when things start becoming alarming and questioning, and be honest with you, I think this is a great motion.
Council Chair, my question is, you know, why not? You know, why not let some, what's the reason, what do you, why, what's one reason why you don't want someone sitting in? I, I, I think that not only Councilman Saab, but every council member should be allowed to, to attend these.
Councilman Wenzel, this is not, this is actually would be taking time out of my day, out of my full-time job to do this, but also, you know, the city attorney made a valid point, where you should trust the administration, but I also, the residents have put their trust in me.
Yep.
In me. And I gave them, when I set up, put my vote, I want to be, the condition would be, be from A to Z. I'm also holding my ethical duty to the residents. And the fact that you come out saying that, oh, this has to do with negotiations, and this has to, confidential, there's nothing confidential. This is public, this is public money.
Yeah.
What's confidential about it? If a resident called me and asked me what's going on at the fire station, I don't know. The administration, you never respond. You guys are always insulting us in our emails, like they're threatening and daring us. Well, you know, all I can say is, I had a talk with our Fire Chief. I had a talk with our fire department. I think they completely understand, and honestly, we have the best Fire Chief in, in, I think in the country. Most honorable, most, most understanding person there is. And our fire department understands, and we see what they're going through right now, and we're not gonna build on what the administration wants and what they're gonna put forward. We're gonna build on what the fire department wants, and what they desire, and what they design, and what their needs are.
I just, I just, I just want to read something right here from the Michigan City Council generally proposed. This is what Dana Parrish sent us last week, and it says, "Key aspects of city council's oversight in the state of Michigan." This is not Dearborn Heights. This is the entire state. That means every city has a city council member that has these oversight, uh, uh, badges or laws that says legislative authority. City council holds the legislative power, which inherently includes the right to oversee administration of municipal affairs and enforce city policies. That means right now, if a policy comes to put together and says, approved and, and is, you know, by this body that says, we want Councilman Saab to be in there, that's the, that's the state of Michigan telling you, Roger, that you can do that.
Oh, no, sir. Don't, don't say that. That's what that's...
And then they also have something called...
It does not say that, sir. That says oversight, as you do when you do a budget.
What are you hiding?
That does not say you sit in meetings and do the job of what the administration.
He didn't say that.
So you don't need a mayor, you don't need a directors, you're gonna do the jobs yourselves. That's incompetent and ineffective and shows lack of leadership, sir. If anyone wants to step forward and lead it, do it properly. Learn how a business runs, learn how administrations run. We delegate. We trust the people we delegate to. You don't step in and run it. And MMRMA told you, when we went, right before you started this job as city council on this position, you don't micromanage. You let the people do their job, and there's lanes for everybody.
We have a motion on the table here, guys, to, to, to rescind our vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. There you go. No more fire station. No more oversight, no more nothing.
I know Councilmen want to also add something to restrict...
H? 9H?
Yeah, well, how, how about, how about... Thank you. If, if I make a motion just to let, because it's city property, just to let myself and, uh, a committee of volunteers to walk the site, so we don't get kicked off while they're walking around, take measurements, things of that nature, just to get the...
How about, how about we, we allow city council to assess the property, not just Tom Wenzel?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
How does that sound? How about you get, because then, then once we start saying only Tom Wenzel, can Magic Councilman, to be honest with you, I don't think I'm gonna go assess the property. I put my trust in you, but if Councilman Ahmad Wenzel or Councilman Council Wenzel, we can't tell them no.
I don't want him.
Whoever he choose, well, council and whoever he chooses to go.
Yeah, I mean, if council wants to take somebody with them, you're more than welcome.
Yeah. Just to, just to get the ball rolling, because the people, the volunteers that want to get this, they're interested in going there, taking measurements, looking at what kind of dirt there.
So a motion for 9H to allow city council members to assess the property at the corner of...
Van Born and Academy?
Van Born and Academy.
City-owned property.
At the city-owned property. Uh, any chance we can get the exact...
I can get the, uh, I, I've, I've got, the director gave me, he text, he, uh, sent me a thing, and it's got the property identification number on it.
Can you, can you read it?
I don't have it with me right now. I can send it to Lynn. I can get it to her tomorrow.
Whatever the addresses of, uh, Total Automotive is.
Well, it's, uh, it's the old, uh, party apartments.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the address is, it's...
Look, look, I think that's fair.
Between Academy...
But this is not approving anything. It's not saying no farmer's gonna go. This is just allowing the city council to assess.
Yeah, okay.
So, all right. Can I get a second?
Second.
Sorry, Councilman. I think I may have stolen your, uh, motion, but I only wanted to read it out.
No, it's fine. Let's get going.
Who's the second?
Second is Councilman Wenzel.
Oh, you got, you motioned?
I guess.
Okay.
I thought.
And you're gonna survey.
Could you get that?
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
All right. Let's do that better. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have...
We gotta get out of, back to the meetings.
No, we don't. We're still, you don't have to get out of a closed session when, I mean, uh...
Very suspended.
You don't have to get out of it anymore, because there's nothing else but comments from council members.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Saab.
We got a few comments I wanna, wanna put up, and I want to start off first with back to the fire department issue. Again, this is not an insult to anybody in the city. This is not an insult to any residents and to our great fire department. This is what you call transparency, and this is what you call holding them accountable. This has been going on for two years. The second, we gave them the opportunity to go out and move forward. They took advantage of it, and this is, this is what this is doing right now, is holding, holding the administration accountable. A couple of things. Uh, the park back here behind us, Van Horn Park behind us, it's an absolutely...
Hazardous society.
Not just hazardous. It's, it's unbelievable. There was supposed to be a scheduled meeting with DTE when the city engineer was up here. Uh, at the last, uh, council meeting we had, he said Wednesday, the following Wednesday, we're gonna have a meeting. I emailed him, he never responded back. But I was out there, the, the day of the meeting, the council meeting, we had the last council meeting, the next day, Wednesday, I was actually back out there with a bunch of directors that were there. What the city failed to tell, uh, residents is, we came asking for $85,000 for repairs because the bathrooms are clogged. When I was out there, DPW was out there, water department was out there, rec, uh, director was out there, a bunch of people from DPW were out there. What they didn't notify us is, when they ran a new basin line across the bathrooms, they ripped out the pipe, the sewage, um, and the electrical works placed right through it, just covered it right back up. But the city engineer comes here, says that we gotta pay for it. They gotta figure out the problem. It might be a tennis ball. That wasn't disclosed. Second thing, the basins and the parking lot, we walked the park with the building director. He started taping everything off with caution tape. You got equipment that, with the wrong nuts and bolts. You got rails that were just loose. Uh, the turf, we were picking staples off the ground. Uh, the carpet that, you know, the carpet was supposed to have padding. It was supposed to have a hard surface under it with up to six inches of rubber. They had regular sand that was washing in into the basins. The basins were literally full to the top. And they say that this was gonna cost about $85,000 to fix. When we looked at the equipment, pictures we took, and I sent an email, I honestly tell you, it's between $600,000 to $700,000 worth of repairs. So, I'm doing a ride along with a police officer that Friday. We pull up into the park there, we find a company doing the work, and I ask them, I'm like, "Hi, how are you having a talk with them?" I'm like, "No, what kind of job is this? Is this acceptable?" You know, you know what they respond to me and tells me? The company Premier. "Yeah, we hired a contractor that did a pretty shitty job." This is the contractor the city hired. He's like, "I don't know what to tell you, but, uh, this is the work we got, and we're trying to fix it." Spoke to DTE. And DTE, I was advised that they can't talk to us. They can only talk to the mayor's office and the chief of staff, where that went. But that park should be closed. It's not safe. The work, the level of quality that's at that park is ashamed. I swear to God, there's, uh, just, the residents should go take a walk on there. $2 million into that project. And by the way, the, the splash pad, they're saying it was damaged, and it's $350,000 to repair it. They also ripped the wires out when they were digging and never fixed anything. And I got a pool guy to come look at it, and they said it would cost nowhere near that to fix the plumbing and the concrete there. So just when we say that we want transparency, we want good contractors coming out, I, I'm not trying to do it. Council Chair's not trying to do it. The city deserves better. Our residents, for their kids and the money they're paying, deserve better.
I know nothing about contracting.
Right, I'm just saying. We're looking at the, the mulch. They put mulch right next to base. Every time it rains, they're filling up. Like, it makes no sense. The, the caps on these basins, or sewers, I'd wanna call them, they're about seven, eight pounds. Any child can lift them up in a park and go fall right in there, seven, eight feet deep. These are supposed to be tamper-proof cover. Like, I don't understand how the city's engineers, uh, there was twelve of them out there, allowed this kind of work. I mean, I was out, out there with the city inspectors, and they were just pointing things out left and right, but how is it open? My second thing is, I emailed Roger, uh, last week, asking him, I had a resident reach out to me, and I sent him the message the resident sent me. They were concerned that the mayor had bought a house in another city, is he still living in the city of Dearborn Heights? Because what the charter says is, to be an elected official, you have to live in the city. He said, "I will look into it." So I'm guessing he has not seen the mayor, and the mayor's nowhere to be around, because he hasn't responded back to.
Council Chair, if any accusations against...
These are not accusations. Anybody can FOIA that email.
Do you want me to object it because we look into it?
FOIA that email.
Point of order, guys. Let Councilman Saab finish, please.
We look to see if he's still here in the city.
Roger, please. Okay, thank you.
Uh, FOIA that email. Uh, third, uh, third thing is, over the Fourth of July weekend, my God. I have pets. My pets were going crazy. But put the pets aside. I put them downstairs in our theater, which is soundproofed, great. I woke up the next day. It took me two and a half hours to clean out my pool, how, how dirty it was. Like, I understand that, where the people have the right to celebrate, but we also have the right to enforce our laws and our city ordinances, which the police department, and I'm not pointing this on any of our officers, because I called one night, the police were out there at Conlock, had some kids pulled over in the parking lot. We gotta do better. Dearborn issued like 400 tickets. They made money off of these citations. How much did we do? What did the city do? Because they were doing fireworks till 1:30 in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand we're short-staffed, but this is where we say the city misses out an opportunity, but also to protect the residents and safety of the residents. I gotta always complain about, uh, speeders. Please tell your kids, slow down. These accidents are getting worse by the day. I swear. It's, it's so bad what we're seeing. And while we're being told the kind of accidents are happening, please tell your kids, if you get them a fast car, know you're giving your kid a weapon. Please tell them to slow down in residential neighborhoods, please. And please, if you got long grass or weeds, please maintain your homes. I mean, we have residents come and saying how bad our city looks that live in our own city. It all starts with every resident and their property. Maintain your property. It takes one hour of the week just to do some work, lawn work outside, please. Thank you.
Okay. Wow. Okay. Next, uh, council member.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Council Chair. It's whatever Councilman Saab said. Actually, our police department, they're doing a great job, uh, and I have, you know, good news from the police department. They started something called, uh, Citizen Academy to whoever is interested. They're gonna have a three-day Citizen Academy to see exactly what they go through, what they do. Like, it's called Behind the Badge Academy. So any, anybody from Dearborn Heights can, uh, fill out an application and, uh, join those three days, uh, where they're gonna offer sessions to attend at no cost, uh, for adults in Dearborn Heights who have interest in experiencing law enforcement. A three-day program designed to provide insight to a daily responsibility of police officers. Uh, it's, uh, July 28th, uh, the 30th and 31st. The time is from 6:00 to 8:30 PM at the Justice Center. Uh, you can go over impaired driving awareness, K-9 demonstration, investigative skills, vehicle and building searches, criminal investigations, and crime scene technique. Uh, whoever is interested, please contact Officer Hjeg at 313-310-6868. You can text them too. Again, 313-310-6868. I think it's a, it's a great academy to be in, just to see exactly what they go through, and you'll have a better, you know, understanding of, uh, the work our great officers, uh, do every single day. Um, thank you. Thank you, Council Chair.
Any other council member? Go ahead, Councilman, uh, actually, I'll go, because I know you like to go last.
Fine, okay.
Go ahead, Councilman. Council, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, fireworks were bad this year. What I said maybe didn't come out clearly. Don't let them off in our residential neighborhood, neighborhoods. There was somebody in the neighborhood I'm in, uh, injured real bad from shooting off their, uh, uh, commercial-grade fireworks. Uh, I want to also echo what Councilman Saab said. Please slow down, uh, in our, our residential neighborhoods. Um, boy, do I see some fancy cars in the North End, BMWs, and let parents know and everyone know, you're, you're, a lot of responsibility comes with that car. And as Councilman Saab said, you, you, you don't want to be giving your, your son or daughter a weapon to run over a child and end up getting sued. A good job to, with our IT department with finding the money for the upgrade for our, um, BASF software. And, uh, I really hope we can come to some quick resolution, because we had agreed on a site, and, uh, we gotta get this fire station built. It's a big contract. We're entitled to, uh, some oversight, so let's, let's see if we can come to a resolution regarding this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I quickly just want to say, hey, I hope everybody had a good and, and a joyful Fourth of July. Um, to see that we didn't do our best at stopping the amount of hazardous fireworks, illegal fireworks, I say, it's disappointing. Like, I, I, I watched the, the neighboring city come out and say, if you do this, if you shoot them out in the street, we're gonna ticket you. Um, if you do this, we're gonna come and we're gonna issue a ticket with a, with a large fine. 500, uh, uh, tickets, or 400 tickets were given out. I think it was like 250 arrests were made, you know, regardless of what the numbers are. But the truth is, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't tell our residents that if you want to do fireworks, go do it in your backyard. You can't do it on the public street. Instead, we just thought it's became a free-for-all, and I hope next year we can, you know, we can find ways to tell our residents, if you want to enjoy fireworks, go do it in your backyard. You know, I have an animal. I got a dog. So if he was held and, you know, we, we had to, it was just ugly. I won't go too far into that. But I also want to talk about another couple of issues that I'm so bothered by. There's a, there's a lie going around that city council didn't approve $10,000 or $10 million, uh, uh, grant. That the city council didn't approve a $10 million grant, all right? It's all out there. I don't, I don't know. But there's a rumor out there that this city council did not approve a $10 million grant. Adam Clerk, I'd love for you to research that, because I don't remember, but I do remember that there was a grant, that I did vote no on. And I believe Councilman Wenzel voted no on, but it still passed. And the vote, my no vote, was because it was gonna increase water bills. And I want to vote yes. But nothing is coming for the city council at $10 million that, that it was a grant that was coming in. We said, no, we don't want to accept the money. That's a lie. So these lies that are being spread out there is just so ugly. Another thing, I'm having many, many conversations with residents, and people are just fed up with the blight. They're just fed up with it. What are we doing? Why are we still giving 24, 25-day waiting, then the summer's over? Like, anybody you rate right now in July, come August, it's gonna, the, 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 end of August, you're gonna see the trees start falling down. It's gonna be September, we're changing colors, like, it is crazy. Um, so I really believe that we, as, as this body here, need to do better and, and put, you know, better policies forward. And we need to start holding people accountable. It's not nice. Um, and then, you know, just to talk a little bit about our DPW crew, I know that they're going out there day in, day out, do some of the work with the street sweepers, uh, but they're not gonna be able to clean every single catch basin on every single street. That's 180 square miles. It's impossible. So to the residents at home, I know these roads seem like they're not safe, but we need to clean those catch basins, because that's gonna prevent flooding. It's not gonna prevent it 100%, but it's definitely gonna make things easier. I passed by some of these neighborhoods, and, and I blame a lot of it on the sycamore trees. I'm going through the neighborhoods, and I'm seeing so many of these catch basins. They're just covered with, with pounds of dirt and leaves. Like, what are we doing? And I don't blame the residents. Putting it on us too, but I'm asking that our residents do a little better. Please, upkeep your homes. Clean the catch basins in front of your homes. Tell your children to slow down. Hopefully by next year, we can figure out something about these dangerous fireworks. Thank you. Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, first of all, I want to say that I'm gonna stay on this eviction, uh, resolution, and as Councilman Baydoun just said, we need to get together as a council and work on this, uh, the time it takes for the court to, uh, to write tickets and assess fines. Takes too long. It should be something, you get your first warrant, you get your first warrant, you get, get a ticket or whatever. Second time, you don't get a warrant. You just get the ticket, the city comes and cleans it up, and you get put on your taxes. It's too much time. Some of these things go on for months and months in the court system. Not blaming the courts, it's just the way it is. So maybe as a body here, we can work on something to advise the courts or work with the courts and come up with a solution where these things are just ma, you know, instant. You know, you You know, you don't have this time to, I mean, multiple offenders, that's a big issue. They're just like, they clean it up and they're back again doing it. I talked to the ordinance officers, I went to a court order cleanup the other day with some court, with some ordinance people, and they said, well, this is the third time they've been here, they're doing this, they keep on coming back and back. I mean, it's ridiculous, so we gotta do something about that. And thank you, Counselor Chair, for the last meeting, reading a little statement about the situation I was involved in. I suffered a severe head trauma about six weeks ago in whiplash, and I'm just recovering now, I'm probably 75% recovered, still have some issues, but I wanna thank everyone for bearing with me and not, you know, I know a lot of people knew about it and people were respecting my privacy and not getting into it, but thank you so much. I'm back.
Counselwoman?
Yeah. I just wanna say to the residents, we need to be aware of what's going on in your neighborhood. 3:38 a.m. this morning, a car was stolen from in front of my house by two individuals. Looking at my cameras, I saw a few cars pass this pair as they were walking up and down the streets. No one should be walking up and down the street in the middle of the night, especially 3:38 in the morning. So, you know, if we're more aware of it, maybe we call and alert the police and have them check on it, because what's open at 3:38 in the morning? And they were just pacing the street, so.
Sometimes they're walking 4:00 in the morning, so don't follow them.
Well, they were in the middle of the street and they were walking fast, they were dressed in hoodies, pulled over there.
I'm sleeping at 4:00 in the morning.
In this heat, you're not wearing a hoodie, okay? But it was just shocking. And that's not the first time. This happened about three years ago, and it was a kitty corner house across the street from me. They had a car stolen, and I watched the same thing happen. It was a pair of individuals that went up to the car, got in, and took it.
I think we have a curfew, I'm not sure. I know City Detroit, I was watching the news yesterday, and they're coming up with their curfew, no one 16 or under out after 10 a.m. or 10 p.m., 17 to 11.
I think we have a-
No, no. It's not state, it's each city. I was watching the news, the City of Detroit, do we have a curfew?
Yes, we do. No, we do.
We should look into that, because I know, I live on the corner, on kind of a busy street, and there's kids walking all night long, and you know, every time I see them, I gotta stop and wait till they walk away, blocks away, so I can go back and look in the house or something. But my dog barks constantly all night, kids walking by.
You know what's also crazy? I was in your neighborhood the other day, and the mini bikes.
Oh, gosh, oh.
Crazy in your neighborhood.
There's a guy in Combs Station, there's a guy.
No, 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 no. Guys, on Lehigh Street, there was a guy on a John Deere tractor.
Oh, yeah.
And I swear, and he went 70 miles per hour. It was so fast, I said, what?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I said, there's no, and I was with my buddy Adam, and he's like, what is that?
That's an adult. That's an older guy that does that.
I don't know.
I've called on it before, yeah. I mean, it's-
I think I've seen him.
Yeah, he's got like a car motor on it.
He probably doesn't have a driver's license.
The blue dirt bike too?
Oh, yeah, the blue dirt bike, and go-kart.
I cannot believe what I was noticing, I said, this, we really need to get ourselves together.
And they don't stop for the stop signs either.
Stop sign, did it?
They blow right through them, scares me.
All right. Next up, the other council member. Say, number, take it over to an officer.
Counselor Chair, okay. We do have our Echors Creek meeting on Wednesday, oh, I took the glasses off, okay. The 23rd at 6:00 p.m., 3335 South Beach Daily. Okay, I got it. And now, the announcement for this Thursday, the 28th, for the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, we will have our treasurer and our assessor speaking. We have to confirm a new location, so I'll advise you at the next council meeting, because apparently the school board needs their meeting to go longer that night. So we'll probably be at the police department, the Justice Center, but I will confirm that at our next meeting. That's 7 o'clock for that.
All right, let us know.
I will do that.
Echors Creek meeting is the 23rd.
Yeah.
Fourth meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Any other announcements from the police station?
Curfew is from 10 p.m. to 6 a.m. Sunday through Thursday, and 11 p.m. to 6 a.m. Friday and Saturday.
We need to start calling, we see them walking the streets.
Anyone age 17 and under is 10 a.m. to 6 a.m. Sunday through Thursday, and 11 p.m. to 6 a.m. on Friday and Saturday.
And this is the state of the city?
The city of Dearborn Heights. By city ordinance.
Yeah, I knew we had one. I got young men.
Exceptions aren't even-
It's in our city code.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Please, leave me, my wife has to be home by nine.
So I'm talking as a comptroller right now. I wanna piggyback on something that you talked about, Counselor Chair. I don't take any sides, I'm a neutral party, I'm an honest person. My issue with this city at this time in the past year or so is that there's a lot of misinformation spread from all different parties, administration, council, residents, and all that. My only issue is, is that when misinformation is presented by a city administrator, a city official, or an elected official, that sways public opinion and the public is misinformed. Regarding item 11A today, I specifically told you that in May 6th, an email was sent out to Council Chair, Council Board Tim, as well as the treasurer, stating that the Wayne County came back and explained exactly the bond language that said that the CSO over-capture cannot be paid out, paid back until the bond has been completely paid, which would have ended in December 2027. This idea that the administration failed or did not complete their tasks was unwarranted, and the reason being is that now the public thinks that the administration is just letting money sit out there and not taking care of business, so to speak. That money is coming back, and honestly, this resolution means absolutely nothing in a sense that whatever anybody comes onto board, any communication comes onto board within this matter, it's gonna be the same outcome. The bond language states that the over-capture cannot be paid back until December 2027. So to come up here and say, hey, the administration hasn't been doing anything, but then I have email record between Wayne County, as well as within, between council members, that the resolution is, hey, we understand we over-captured, but the legal language of the bond states that we cannot give you the money back until December 2027.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If it can be built to 2027, it's great. The man in treasury wants to spend her time trying to get that information, why is it bothering you?
It doesn't bother me, but the statement made that the administration has not resolved this matter is false.
Okay. And her get that information, it'll be back?
But I'm just saying, like, it's not even against this policy, I'm just saying in general. I've seen, I've sat in council meetings, I'm a resident of the city. Honestly, before I came on as an employee, I didn't know that all the function of the city, but working here for two years, I realized there's a lot of variables to a operating city. And unfortunately, the residents are not getting the best of the city council as well as the administration due to the tension between the two. And I've tried my best to just be the mediator and neutral party and ensure that I present information in the best way I see fit without taking sides. I feel like as a city government, we are failing the residents, and we have to do a better job at working together and making sure that we give the residents the best services possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's out there?
All right, anyone else, any other announcements?
Baydun, sir?
How's it going? Just for our DPW report slash announcements, I got a few things to go through each one of our sub-departments in the DPW, and then just a couple updates to residents, the city operating as a whole. Our water department fixed, this is all the month of June, just to give a little ideas to what DPW does pretty much every day. Keep in mind, working hours are 36 hours a week, 7:00 to 3:30 Monday through Thursday, which I tried to get changed once, but there's lots of moving parts to that. Water Department fixed six water main breaks, five service leaks, responded to five sewer backups, repaired four gate valves and/or replaced them. The highway department spent 190 and a half labor hours, dangerous and dead trees as best they could, 336 labor hours cold patching both major and local streets, 352 labor hours street sweeping. The mechanics had 29 significant repair orders sent over to them. Keep in mind, there's three mechanics, it's 108 total hours a week. Do the math, it's roughly 3.72 hours per job if you're looking at changing out large truck tires, changing out large brakes, changing out, working with larger equipment. That would be assuming they take no breaks and have no lunch, so. Building maintenance, they put together a list for me of what they do each day, which is pretty much everything. Keep in mind, we have one crew leader at the moment, working through roughly 50, 60 work hour, 50 to 60 work orders a week. All the other guys are out mowing constantly, every day from about 7:15 to 3:15, because they obviously need time to get in and out and around the city. Our meter reading, our fifth tower is almost online to read some of these new meters, so it should become active, which will at least alleviate some of the workload on our three meter reading employees. And then, just a few updates right here. I urge residents and council members, and I guess all 10 elected officials, you figure between the 10 elected officials in the city, you guys should be able to reach, I don't know, 90, 95% of residents in your communication. Please put your garbage cans on the extension, get your cars off the road. I've been talking to the police department to try to up enforcement for cars. It's not the nicest thing to see. Obviously, residents get frustrated, but we gotta start doing it at some point. Trees, we do have Urban out there working every day. They did have a little bit of turnover in their work crews, so there may be, there's few discussions to be had, that I've sent out emails to different people within our department, even a handful of elected officials, if they wanna sit and be part of our discussions with Urban. Still looking for any employees, particular ones with CDLs that can be professional, productive, come in, wanna work at the DPW. We did get a pretty good employee in a few of the departments, water, highway, meter reading, so hopefully we get a few more coming up. Last one, just to, I'll send out more of an email, but a little bit of communication coming from the DPW to the council members. If, I don't have any problem, if you guys, I'll certainly send you progress meeting, things that you guys can log in virtually if you want. Like I said, we sit in on a lot of, the administration consistently sits in on a lot of progress meetings for both water main replacement, the meter changeout program, and a lot of daily operations. I'll send you guys invites, so. Last, the VEPo does have a, we're about 31 or 32% through the meter changeout program. I'll either send you guys the screenshot data of what they put together on a summary and the invite, if you wanna sit in on some of the meetings, just to get a little bit more of a grasp, because I think there's just too much. This side doesn't do anything, that side doesn't do anything, these people are wrong, that people, it's not productive. So just keep that in mind, I'll start sending out a few of these meeting invites, if you guys wanna sit on them, a lot of them are virtual. That'll conclude everything I have. Any questions?
Counselor Chair?
Yes, Chair.
This guy is so transparent, and I'll tell you, we're so lucky to have him in our city. I mean, he's unbelievable. It's sad to say that he's unbelievable, because, you know, it shouldn't be that way with everybody. You know, the tree, the guy's doing the trees, they're doing a phenomenal job. I was in the DPW yard, and he rigged up a mock tree in there and was teaching the guy his different knots and roping and rigging, and when you climb trees and stuff.
Hopefully a little bit, it's a little bit of, I mean, we're still on a very limited overtime setup, so the employees, I'm gonna be honest, are not the most happy at the moment, but that's just kinda where the city's at.
But why? We started a new fiscal year this year, you can-
I'm not gonna, well, you wanna run into the same problem come April next year? That's why I have-
You could do, you know, overtime, you know, two days a week. You're leaning towards some-
I mean, do you need our help on trying to get that five-day work week back or something?
Oh, yeah, I've tried.
What can we do?
Contract negotiations, so.
Can we split it up, you know, a little bit? Can we split-
Tried to.
Some on Monday, and they're off Monday, and they work Friday or something like that?
Let me ask you a question, is that the issue with the administration, or is that the issue with the union employees?
City and union. It's not even, I would argue it's not the administration, it's more of a union issue, but we can discuss that at a later date.
Yeah, I mean, we need to work something out on that, sure.
I agree with that.
That's like, you know, and-
It's just, it allows for the workload to increase so high, where you have employees wanting to do all the work and not really the resources to respond to a lot of residents. So I'm just trying to at least encourage residents, you can keep calling and sending your requests, but the answers are based on both data and some kind of process, to be fair. Somebody's gonna be first, somebody's gonna be last, and there are a lot of tree issues in this city, but we're working through them actively on a daily basis, between the supervisors, myself. As I said, council members really wanting, I've always used that, don't stop somebody from working, so if you guys wanna come and work, I'm not gonna stop you, especially with free labor, so.
You know, and one thing is, he mentioned that the towers for the meters, water meters. I brought that subject up several times, that was phase two, and he's the first one we heard from, that there are active towers now.
We got four out of the five. We're waiting on DTE for one at a park that we're having problems with, and once they're all five online-
Thank you for that information.
We can actually-
I know nothing.
Start using it to take a little bit of the meter reading workload off, because you figure with three meter readers, there's a lot of time historically given to employees off here, so occasionally on a good day, you get two in a department like that, you figure two people for a whole city, basically being male people for every house, it's just math, so.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. We're all tired, right? Okay, I'll speak as a treasurer and I'll be really brief, because I'm not gonna belabor this whatsoever. I gave you guys the timeline, you know, Hassan Jamal, as you know, when he was budgeting compliance, was, made the discovery, him and I, from '21 until '22. I have over 20 emails, right? It was just us two pursuing that. It wasn't until, what was that date? In '22, when we got the email from the mayor, and that's when I said I was gonna go to bond council, and he said for me to stop. Now, you get an email in May of '25, I was already sending you guys emails, I think that's a direct result, this is my opinion, of trying to get this done for you all, for the residents, to get it done for the residents. So I'm gonna thank you right now, thank you for supporting that, so we can get it done for our residents. I'm tired of the back and forth, I'm tired of excuses, it's gone on enough, enough is enough, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, now take it over to the audience. Actually, before we continue on with the audience, I wanna recognize Sue, I know she's taken some hard time, she recently-
You're gonna kill me again.
Happy belated birthday.
And happy, and happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
One of her friends texted me. One friend tells me something, the other friend tells me another thing. I don't know what to do, I give up on you, Sue.
I appreciate it. Mal Sukmenzki, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. When I was on school board, and we had a millage, or a bond, I'm sorry, and we had weekly meetings, I, like Councilman Sob, volunteered to go to the weekly meeting so that there was somebody that knew what was going on, and it wasn't just to keep informed, it wasn't a trust issue, it was because there's so many parts moving. So I want to personally thank Councilman Sob for volunteering to take that time out. I want to volunteer, if a resident's allowed to go and sit quietly just to be present, I would do that. I am retired now and have the availability to do that, but it is not necessarily about trust, it's because you have to have people involved to understand and to catch all the problems that can come up and arise with these kind of situations. And I, like city council, think that our police and fire do a great job, and it has nothing to do with our fire department, they deserve the best, we all want them to have the best, but because our previous fire department is in the state it's in, because things weren't done correctly, because the park is in the state it's in and things weren't done directly, it doesn't hurt to have somebody else there. So get your personal feelings out of it, quit feeling like it's an attack, it's an extra hand to help the wheel spin, and it helps keep everybody on the up and up and the residents informed. So thank you. That was it.
Thank you, thank you, Sue. Council Chair, speaking of birthdays, today's a special person's birthday, it's owner of VIP Car Wash, Paul Aberson's birthday today. Happy birthday, Paul. He's always attends our meetings, he's always.
Paul?
Yeah, I don't know if he's on there or not, he's out there celebrating.
Happy birthday, Paul. Go ahead, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Mike Blackburn, Dearborn Heights, Arnold Street. Just a couple things from what Assessor Comer was saying earlier. I hope you guys had picked a right commercial appraiser to go after, to fight this. She recommended somebody who the city had used before that won against Home Depot. If I'm doing my math correctly, if the summer taxes are a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and they want to go from fifty dollars per square foot to thirty thousand, thirty dollars per square foot, that's a forty percent reduction, that's a forty-four thousand dollar reduction in summer taxes, and that'll be another twenty thousand dollars in winter taxes if the city loses this case. So I hope the council made the right decision, because sixty-four thousand dollars, the administration will be back here making sixty-four thousand dollars in cuts because we lost, because the city lost this case. So I hope that you are comfortable that you picked the right appraisal firm to handle this case. And with Councilman Saab, we do need, we do need somebody on council to oversee some engineering, because the, the street in front of my house, water still does not flow uphill. And there was a fielding engineer on site, and when they, when they did the street in front of my house, and I did my curb, they used one by four by quarter inch form, and that's how my curb, curb was formed. It's wrong, so that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, looks like we have one on Zoom, Rose's iPhone. All right, Rose, we're asking you to unmute yourself, please. It might be a glitch. Rose, can you hear us?
My kids say all the time, glitch. Let me do it.
All right, let's ask anyone else in the audience. Rose, I'm gonna give you another twenty seconds. All right. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Second. Motion.
Hey. Is there anybody else in the audience? I was having a conversation outside there.
All right, see you next meeting.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Trappowski, Columbia, come on, you have to know this by heart.
Really?
You listening?
I'm here for you, buddy.
Okay. Can we get the contract company to block off this park? Because you're leaving us wide open for liability. So it's a huge liability, we don't need any more lawsuits. So get Mr. Deeb or somebody out there to get it fenced off.
Which park?
Van Hooen Park.
I thought already it was.
Isn't that?
You give him a form to fill out and get it over to Mr. Deeb? Or just send Mr. Deeb an email in the morning if you want.
Okay. I'll do that. But he, he should have had that fenced off, or the contractor should have had it fenced off, with all the damage out there.
Anything else? Yep, try Rose one more time. Guys, guys, councilmen, if you want to have some side conversations, you guys can do it outside, thank you. Rose, can you unmute yourself? We're here for you all night, Rose.
No. You know it's Rose.
All right. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Ahmad, by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion?
I have something.
Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Rose, I'm sorry, let the ayes have it, motion carries. Have a good night, guys.